So again, folks, grab a seat. And this is going to be a festive, fantastic day. Not because I'm back, but because of all of you out there. So the modesty of Montana. What can you say? Okay, good morning and welcome to the August 15th meeting of Fresno City Council. It's an honor and a privilege and a pleasure to have all of you here attending these meetings. It's very important to us as your representatives that you be here and share these different agenda items with us and give us your opinions. So with that, we'll have roll call.
Councilmember Bretafell. Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Sparza.
President.
Councilmember Soria.
Here.
Council Vice President Arias.
President Sante.
And President Capriolio.
I am here, thank you. I also want to welcome our councilmember-elect for District 2, Michael Carbossi. Again, congratulations on your victory. When I ran, it was two of us. You ran against six, I believe. So it was pretty close. To get 59% is fantastic. And we're looking forward to your new, fresh eyes on the process and on City Hall. So welcome, welcome, sir. Okay, next, we're going to have the invocation, Pastor Scott Gossenberger from the Covenant Community Church. So would you please come forward? And we'll all stand for the invocation. Immediately thereafter, we will salute our flag.
I want to say thank you to Councilmember Bretafell for inviting me to come and represent the faith community as we look to the Lord and offer our praise to Him and ask for His guidance. Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for Your goodness, mercy, and Your grace. We need all of those things today. We think of your Apostle Paul who wrote to his mentee Timothy in Chapter 2, Verses 1 and 2, and invited him to pray for city leaders, for those who are in authority, that we might live peaceable lives in godliness and all humility. I ask God that you would be a part of our community. We pray your hand of blessing upon our city. We thank you for Fresno. It's a great city to live in. Thank you for the blessings of a good economy. Thank you for the safety that you have provided for us thus far. We ask God that you would continue to do that. We need you and we need your protection. And ultimately, Lord God, you are in charge. And so we ask that you would guide us and be with us. Now, I pray for each of these councilmembers. I ask for them individually that you would bless them, bless their families, bless their homes. I pray, God, that you would grant them humility in their decision-making, grant them humility in their attitude, that they might make decisions out of love and out of a desire for purity among our people and in their decisions. I also pray, God, that you grant them wisdom. Though we need your wisdom because you are in charge and the days that we live in are evil. So we're asking, God, that you would do great and mighty things in us as we seek to follow you and place our trust solely in you. Now, God, guide this meeting. May it bring honor and glory to your name alone, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Ready, salute. Our pledge.
The United States of America. And if you recall, the oath which stands for only nation, only God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Pastor. Next, we're going to go to a couple of matters we have to take care of before we get to our ceremonial presentations. And first is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
I have several changes. You all should have a copy in front of you. The first item is a correction to one of our proclamations, which is coming up. The name was incorrectly spelled on the agenda, but it should be Leo Savala Day. The next one is another spelling error, which it should be Ralph Tobar, not Tovar. So we'll make sure we read that correctly. And also Congressman Costa will be doing a flag presentation for Post 509 Ralph Tarver Ceremony. Councilmember Nelson Asparza, I'm sorry. Councilmember Nelson is the sponsor. Item 4, excuse me, Item 1K, approve a tenure agreement with SenCal Business Finance Group to administer the revolving loan is moved to August the 22nd meeting. Item 1L, approve a 2019 administrative plan for the City of Fresno revolving loan program is also moved to August the 22nd. One N is in Nancy, approve a requirements contract to Sequoia Western in the amount not to exceed $350,000 for weed and public nuisance abatement services. That item is also moved to 8/22. The 1035 item, which is a hearing pertaining to Fresno County Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, is continued to September 19, 2019 at 10:25. File ID, excuse me, Agenda Item Number 4A, Council Boards and Commissions, Communication Reports Assignments, Appointments, Reappointments, Removal to City Boards and Non-Board and Commissions, is going to move to September 19, 2019. Those are the changes I have.
Thank you very much. Do any councilmembers have any changes they wish to address on the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Seeing none, a motion by Member Soria.
Second.
Second by Member Arias. Is there any opposition? Passes 6-0. And we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the amended minutes of July 25, 2019, Council meeting?
Motion to approve.
No changes, Madam Clerk?
No changes.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, we'll go on to the ceremonial presentation. And I'm going to do this in reverse order. I know our congressman is extremely busy and we really appreciate you coming to our chambers. I've been to your chambers and you've been a very gracious host and I'd like to reciprocate today with the presentation. So this is a proclamation for Ralph Tobar Rodriguez Day with the American Legion Post 509. I claim the 509 is in my district. Member Asparza claims it's in his district. So we have to do some boundary adjustments, one way or the other, or we can co-own, if you will, the area of the 509. So Congressman, Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Council President, I'm going to buy you a map. When this presentation's over, we'll double-check.
All right. It's a deal. We'll do it together.
Good morning, folks. Welcome to City Hall. This morning is a special day. I have the honor of recognizing our friend here, Mr. Ralph Tobar Rodriguez, retired Staff Sergeant Ralph Tobar Rodriguez, to be exact. And our friends here at the American Legion Post 509 had the wonderful idea of inviting our congressman to join us for this wonderful presentation. So thank you Congressman Costa for being here this morning and to you, Ralph. It's a tough thing to try and fit Mr. Rodriguez's entire legacy into one ceremonial. But just to tell you a little bit about him, his military service began in 1955, when he was initially drafted. And during that tenure in the Army, that included 14 months serving out in Korea. And I think what's great is that when Mr. Rodriguez returned home, his service did not stop there, as he was in the U.S. Army Reserves, served there for another two decades. And taking one step further, when it was time for Mr. Rodriguez here to begin his new chapter, as he joined our friends here at the 509, he did a wonderful thing, helped with the wonderful thing of reviving the Honor Guard. And to my understanding, there have been many veterans and their families served up and down the valley, from north to south, because of that work. And so what I'm trying to say here, Mr. Rodriguez, is your service to our country, your service to your fellow veterans, to this community, obviously extends far and long beyond your time in active duty. And so for that, we thank you. Congressman Costa?
Thank you very much, Councilman Asparza, for the Fresno President City Council and the councilmembers. I'm honored to be with you here today in these very important chambers of our city. To be here, to do what's fitting and appropriate to honor one of our own Staff Sergeant Ralph Rodriguez and with your family and your extended family with the 509 post and the members of your fellow veterans who you've served so honorably with, we all are honored to recognize your contributions to our country. As Councilmember Asparza said, being drafted in 1955, serving 14 months in Korea, following your brothers, your whole family, like many of our families, have had a history of a commitment to service, honor, duty, country. And a grateful nation never, ever can say thank you enough. But in our small way here this morning, we're trying to say thank you for the many contributions you and your family and all of our veterans have made that makes a difference. As a member of Congress, I am obviously involved in a whole host of issues that deal with men and women who are serving in active duty. And I tell my friends and our constituents and people throughout our country that we always, always must remember those who are serving our nation and never, ever to forget those veterans who have come home to continue to contribute as you have. The Honor Guard, as Councilmember Asparza said, that you have taken with great pride and humility to train. When many of us are participating in ceremonies throughout the year, whether it be on Memorial Day or Veterans Day or for services for veterans who have passed on, the Honor Guard is always there. And you make that happen. And you do it with great pride. And not only that, but you've trained other Honor Guards with Armand community, who have put together their efforts, and you've showed them the appropriate way in which we provide that distinction, that respect that is so important for those who have served our country. So I'm just honored to be here with you and your family and your fellow veterans with the City Council of Fresno and its elected officials and Councilmember Asparza, good friend, who thought it was appropriate and fitting that we honor you. And I thank Councilmember Asparza for taking this time with the busy work that the City of Fresno is doing to honor one of our own. So I'll let you make the presentation and I have a flag for you that's flowing over the United States Capitol, and it will be yours shortly. Councilmember Asparza.
Yeah, so it's my honor to declare today, August 15, Ralph Tobar Rodriguez Day here in the City of Fresno.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for that ovation. Thank you to the City Council and to Mr. Asparza, my consulman, District 7, and he's worked with throughout his tenure here, to Congressman Jim Costa, who is very, very helpful to our veterans. He's been to many, many of our functions. He had a great hand in opening the Soldiers Retirement Home on California, West California over there. Had a very big, him along with Charlie Waters and others, of course, that brought that home to Fresno. And very much appreciative, appreciate the audience that's here, my family, to my wife, Ellen.
Ellen, come on. Come on.
She doesn't want to come up. In November, November 30, to be exact, who will have been married for 62 years.
Wow.
And she's been with me all these years. My military life pulled me away from her many, many times, and she was there.
Councilmember, hand me the flag. You've got to stay here. All right, on behalf of the United States Congress, my colleagues, it is fitting and appropriate that this day, honoring Ralph Rodriguez Staff Sergeant, United States, that we present you with this flag that was flown over the United States Capitol for a job well done in your service to our country. A grateful nation can never, ever say thank you enough. God bless.
Clerk, will you please read the proclamation for the record?
Where is Ralph Tobar Rodriguez, son of Ignacio in Telefora, Rodriguez, a City of Fresno resident and Washington Union High School graduate? And whereas Ralph was drafted to the Army in 1955, following the footsteps of his uncle and brothers during his Army tenure, he served 14 months in Korea. And whereas, upon returning home, he joined the U.S. Army Reserve and served 20 years. And whereas, in the early 2000s, he became a member of the American Legion Post 509 located in Fresno, California, where he was able to reactivate the Honor and Color Guard Unit. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council Members do hereby honor and recognize Ralph Tobar Rodriguez Day. Be it further resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and the City of Fresno Council Members do hereby proclaim Thursday, August 15, 2019, to be Ralph Tobar Rodriguez Day in the City of Fresno.
Thank you all for being here. Congratulations, honor long overdue for probably each and every one of you folks here today, seriously. So we thank you all for your service to our great country. And you're what makes it great, by the way. Next, we're going to do another proclamation. This will be presented by myself and Councilmember Soria. Technology, what can you say? Well, good morning again, everyone. It's great to see all your wonderful faces. It's good to be back from Montana. And this morning, I'd like to have Kevin from the airports. Come on up, Kev. And of course, Emilia here from First 5. You guys are such an important part of our community. This is just our honor today to recognize you. So Kevin, good morning. You know, parenthood has its challenges and children of all ages present opportunities for us to kind of get our hair pulled and frustrated and all that, and I think we can all agree on that. But here at City Hall, we're proud to be part of providing support for moms and giving them the opportunity, moms, to have a healthy choice for their babies. So here at Fresno City Hall, we have the Mother's Room. It's funded by Grant from First 5 and provides a private, quiet space for employees and visitors to City Council, City Hall, to take care of their babies. Our Fresno Airport, this is our director, Kevin Michael, here, they've also provided a private and comfortable place for mothers to breastfeed their babies or to pump breastmilk. The room is available for traveling moms as well as the employees at the airport. During the month of August, this is considered National Breastfeeding Month, so we wanted to thank First 5 and acknowledge all their health benefits to our community and all the health benefits that breastfeeding provides. And also thank you and your wonderful team at the airport for your visionary department in providing space for moms, whether they're traveling to and from Fresno or sending people off on their adventure from the airport, which is expanding every day. We love that. So Councilmember Soria, you started all this, so how about a few words?
So, good morning, everyone. I'm just thrilled to be able to join my colleague, Council President Capriolio, in proclaiming and acknowledging Breastfeeding Awareness Month. As he mentioned, a few years ago, the City of Fresno partnered up with First 5, and I just want to share kind of the story behind why we approached First 5 to help us. So on swearing in, when I got sworn in as councilmember, one of my friends had a brand-new baby, and the baby needed to have his diaper changed. Well, she went to the restroom and she had to change him on the floor. And so we said, we need to change that. But it took that one moment where my friend acknowledged that there was a need here in our city to bring changing tables, but not only to the women's restroom, because we know there's a lot of dads, too, that also change diapers. So we wanted to make sure that we provided the baby-changing diapers to both the men and women's restrooms. On top of that, as mentioned, since we're acknowledging the Breastfeeding Awareness Month, we also added a space that was so critical, because again, we want to encourage not only the moms that come and visit City Hall, but also encourage our employee, our women employees that are moms that have young kids and that want to continue breastfeeding when they come back to work, so that they have a safe space, a comfortable space, so that they are not having to go pump in the restroom. Who wants to eat their food in the restroom, right? So it's about dignity, it's about health, and really championing issues about women. So I want to thank First 5 for stepping up and partnering with us to provide us the resources to make that happen. Thank you.
A few words?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think on behalf of First 5 and our Executive Director, Amelia Reyes, who couldn't be here today, I thank the City of Fresno, not only for recognizing us today, but for taking a stand to be one of the few City Halls that offer this kind of space. You know, systems in our community are the people, the places, and the policies that support families with young children. And we are very proud to be partners with City Hall to take a stand in support of our breastfeeding moms, because it's the healthiest choice for babies. So we thank you again.
Thank you very much. And Kevin, tell us about the airport, what you're doing out there.
Yeah, well, as you know, you know, we have nearly 2 million passengers that go through annually at the facility, and it is a challenge, because you can't bring liquids through the checkpoint. So we have found the facility we put in is being used almost on a daily basis. And as we expand the airport, we're planning on putting more facilities in to be at convenient locations. So, and we were ahead of that curve in terms of, it's actually a codified requirement now on the federal level, right? So we're just trying to stay ahead of that curve, and it's been very well received.
Excellent. Thank you. You've done a great job at the airport, you've done a great job in our community, and with that, we'll have the proclamation read.
Whereas breastfeeding is recommended by major medical organizations as the preferred method of infant feeding and nutrition for infants, adapting over time to meet the changing needs of the growing infant. And whereas, the World Alliance of Four Breastfeeding Action has declared August 1st through 7, 2019, as World Breastfeeding Week. And the United States Breastfeeding Committee has declared August as National Breastfeeding Month to promote breastfeeding. And whereas, the City of Fresno takes their responsibility seriously for nursing moms, as demonstrated by the 2015 opening of the Mother's Room at Fresno Yosemite Airport and for the 2016 establishment of the Mother's Room at Fresno City Hall, for employees and visiting mothers alike to have a private place for breastfeeding or pump. And whereas, thanks to the support from First 5 Fresno County, grant dollars were secured via efforts of Councilmember Esmeralda Soria to establish a space at City Hall, which is used regularly. And whereas, collaborating organizations of the City of Fresno and throughout Fresno County are working to further encourage breastfeeding initiation and duration rates by increasing awareness of the number of benefits associated with breastfeeding. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fresno hereby proclaims the month of August 2019 as Breastfeeding Awareness Month and will continue to promote and support breastfeeding for future health and well-being for all infants. Today is Breastfeeding Awareness Month in the City of Fresno.
Round of applause. Thank you. Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. And be sure to thank your staffs, because without our teams, we couldn't do anything, right? So next, we have another presentation by Councilmember Soria, or two, she's going to take over the show here. Thank you.
I have the honor to be able to do two special presentations this morning, and I'll start off with the first one that will be going to Mr. Leo Savala. So if you can come on up. And I will also call up the family. I know that we have Deborah, one of the daughters, and I know that there's brothers and other sisters, if you guys want to come and join us with your dad. So it is my honor to be able to present this special proclamation to Mr. Savala. He has been recognized nationally for the work that he has done here in the Fresno community. And he also, we just had the opportunity to acknowledge one of our local veterans, but he also has served our country very proudly. And so I want to thank him for his service as a participant of the Army and being in Korea during your time. So I want to thank you for your service. In 1977, Mr. Savala started his interpreting business, which became the first interpreting agency here in the City of Fresno. And so if we think of Fresno and the community and how diverse our community is, we know that at times, because we do have recent immigrants, first generation, that still need and have challenges with the English language. And so he provided and filled the gap of the needs that existed here in our community. Although he did start targeting, obviously, the Spanish-speaking community, because we have a bigger population, he started to recognize that there was a greater need with other ethnic minorities, like our Punjabi community, also Armand community, and so forth. And so he extended his services to make sure that these communities also had the services of interpretation. And he has done this for, what, now 40 years?
Forty-one plus.
Forty-one plus years. So we want to thank you for the service that you lent to the community. I know that you just recently retired, and so we want to wish you well in your retirement. I know that this community is grateful for the tremendous service that you provided to many residents that went through our county court, because if you wouldn't have been able to provide those services, I believe that justice wouldn't be served in all the cases where your business was critical. So I want to thank you for the work and your contributions to not only the City of Fresno, but the Valley. Thank you so much for your service, and just wanted to be able to acknowledge you here in City Hall, because we believe that people like you deserve recognition for the work that you've done, and we want to wish you good luck with your retirement. So before that, I want to give you an opportunity to say a few words, and then we'll have our clerk read the proclamation for the record.
Again, thank you, or for the first time, thank you, actually. Move that way. But I want to thank the Council, Councilmember Soria, for this opportunity and this proclamation. I think it's unique that the City of Fresno, through its council, recognizes local people, local citizens in this manner.
I, I think we need more of that, and of course, we need to recognize the fact that the council needs recognition from the citizens, you know, also. I recently happened to drive on Freeway 41, where we had almost a disaster there in terms of some accumulation of things that were rolling down the slope of the freeway, and I see that it's being cleaned up, which is great. I think, you know, we need more of that. Of course, all of that takes money and takes efforts on the part of the council to be able to, you know, get the resources to do that, and that's one item that I, I was of concern to me, especially driving to the city. I, I drive across country on vacation from year to year, and I notice that in other states, and especially in the city of Texas, if you drive through the freeways in Texas, you see no litter whatsoever. I don't want to make this into a political issue, but, but it is, there is a difference, and I think we need to concentrate more on our city, so that our city becomes, you know, a gravity that brings in people and, and they appreciate their time in Fresno. So, again, I appreciate the fact that Ms. Soria took this action on my behalf, and thank you a lot, and I hope things continue to be in the same way for other citizens and other people in our community. Thanks again.
Well, on behalf of our family and friends, we just want to wish, tell my dad, just thank you so much for your dedication to our family, to the city, and all that you've accomplished through your work. And I know it was, it was a passion for you to do this, and that spilled over to all of our family in how we just appreciate the ethnicity and the communication, how valuable that is to bridging the gap here among our people. And Mom, thank you for standing by your side all these years, and doing the, the hard work behind the scenes as well. And we appreciate you both, and wish you just the best in your retirement.
Thank you.
Lots more traveling.
Yes.
Lots of more traveling. Okay, so Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas the city of Fresno honors Leo Savala, a proud immigrant entrepreneur and American whose dedication to serving the interpretation needs of the community as a whole has earned him national recognition. And whereas, in the year 1964, Mr. Savala enlisted into the U.S. Army, serving California and Korea until 1967. Following his military service, Mr. Savala returned to Fresno to raise his family, and shortly thereafter became a U.S. citizen. And whereas, in the year 1977, Mr. Savala made a commitment to starting an interpreting business, the interpreting agency would be the first in Fresno. And whereas, Mr. Savala initially set out to serve the Spanish-speaking community at large, he quickly diversified by offering interpretations for languages in Chinese, Japanese, Maong, Punjabi, and many other non-native languages. In 1980, Mr. Savala's company, Certified Interpreting Service, was contracted with the county, County of Fresno to be the sole provider of Spanish-language interpreting in the County of Fresno Superior Court. And whereas, in the year 1981, Mr. Savala became one of the four interpreters from California, commissioned by the State Personnel Board of California, to prepare the first state exam used to attain a certification for interpreting. He then administered the exam, enabling individuals in San Francisco and Sacramento to become the first group of certified interpreters in their respective cities. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby recognize the importance of Mr. Savala's contribution to the community of Fresno and the state of California, thus further proclaim April, excuse me, August 15th, 2019, to be Leo Savala Day in the city of Fresno.
And so lastly, I want to call one of my District One interns, Pavin Bharr, if you want to come on down. So I want to be able to recognize Pavin for the work that she did this summer with our office. She spent six weeks as part of our summer internship program. We instituted this program a few years ago, where young people from high school all the way to college students, we give them an opportunity to come intern in the various divisions, including the council offices, and we had the pleasure of having Pavin work with us this summer. She is a student at Santa Clara University. She is studying finance, women, and gender studies, right? And so we want to thank her for the work that she did, from the smallest thing, maybe picking up a phone, making copies, going out and flyering in the neighborhoods, being out at our community meetings or staffing us. All those small things made a difference and helped us be, be able to better serve the constituents that we represent through District One. So, one, we want to just recognize her for her work. Job well done. We appreciate everything that you did, and we want to wish you success as you embark on your, is it your last year? Yeah, her last year at Santa Clara University, and so we are hoping that she will come back. We love to see our young people that leave and come back, the boomerangs, because we believe that you can make, continue to make positive contributions to the community. So thank you so much for all the work that you did. Did you want to say something?
You know, before we move on, folks, I wanted to take a moment to introduce the newest member of the District Four team, Molly Marquez. We're going to bring her in from the office. She's holding down the fort right now. And I also want to acknowledge Evan Lopez. If you all don't mind looking over your shoulder, so handsome young man in the back, that's Evan Lopez. He's a fantastic intern, and we want to thank you for all the work you've done with our constituents and for being part of our District Four team. You're a definite asset, and you'll be returning to high school, but I hope you come back next summer. Keep us in mind, we'd love to have you back. And also Andrew Cluse, and of course Laura Rios, my Chief of Staff, who held the fort down while I was on my vacation, my seminar. Okay, next, we're going to move along to our council comments and reports. I see no one has punched up. Here we go. Member Sparza?
Thank you, Council President. So as we end the summer here, in tandem with the previous comments and presentations, I want to first off, thank my summer interns. We have a couple who's last day today, Sharie Payne, who's a Fresno State student, and Elizabeth Grubb, who's headed back to Berkeley, and Nav Girm, who's not here today, but he's headed back to UCLA soon. So I want to thank my interns, my staff in general, but of course, the summer interns who spent, chose to spend their summer here at City Hall, in the office, getting to know city governments and, and learning. And speaking of the hard work that the interns and staff have done, we had a successful completion of our Beat the Heat series of events at Romayne Park. We had a great turnout, good feedback from constituents, and we'll look forward to doing a very similar sort of series this next summer. Thank you to the parks for all their cooperation, and of course, again, the staff and the interns who put in those hot summer evenings there at the park with us. About a couple weeks ago, we got the chance to welcome a new cohort of UCSF students. These students are participating in the San Joaquin Valley Program of Medical Education, so it was great to welcome some to Fresno and welcome some back to Fresno, and hoping to retain those folks here as our future physicians here in Fresno. Last week, had the privilege of hosting Fresno Bardios Unidos here in the council chambers. We conducted a mock city council hearing for our students. They looked better than us up here, and they, I think they behaved better than us. It was, it was fun to watch. So always a privilege to be able to bring students into the chambers, help them simulate the experience, and inspire their leadership. We are, my office is working on an upcoming series of town halls we'll be conducting during the second week of September, the week of September 9th. We're going to do a few throughout the district, so for those constituents listening, stay tuned, those, more news on that will be coming soon. And this month, here in August, one of our interns, Sharie Payne, put together a informational seminar on human trafficking that we'll be doing August 28th, that's a Wednesday, over at Fresno City College in OAB 251. So we're going to have all the different community organizations who are involved in fighting human trafficking there to, to present. So hoping to pull in members from my district, from the community at large, and of course, the campus. And that'll conclude my comments for today.
Thank you very much. Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple announcements. So today, or is it tomorrow, sorry, Fresno Real Pride Silent Auction and Kickoff Party is happening in the tower. They are celebrating their 30th annual film festival event. They are kicking it off with a silent auction party, and this is at the Painted Table from 6:00 to 9:00, so we hope folks come out and join and support them. You can pick up your passes early for the festival that takes place in the fall in September. I also want to just congratulate and say welcome to the West Area, to Centro de la Familia Advocacy Services neighborhood, they've developed a Neighborhood Resource Center in the Highway City area. This is going to definitely bring services to an area that for a long time didn't have these type of services and have tremendous need. It is now open, and it's providing a couple different services, like Medi-Cal and CalFresh enrollments, DACA renewals, citizenship assistance, parenting classes, and much more. So we're very excited to have that resource west of the 99. Also, want to put a plug in, Labor Day is in a couple weeks. Labor Day Festival happens on Monday, September 2nd. Encourage folks to come out to the fair. And lastly, which was announced a couple weeks ago, Governor Newsom appointed me to the Homeless Task Force, and so I'll be representing the Central Valley region on the task force. I did want to just give everyone a heads up. The task force will be hosting their first meeting in September, the first week of September. Once we have all the details, we will be putting it out to the public, but I'm very thrilled to have the ability to represent our region. I've already made one first, I've had one first meeting with one of the co-chairs, Supervisor Ridley Thomas, from Los Angeles, where we began to lead the conversation, or talk about the conversation, and what are some of the goals that we expect to get out of this task force. So just excited to be part of it, and we'll keep you guys posted as we continue being part of the task force. That is it, Council President. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations on your appointment. As for District Four, I want to thank an amazing team, a great partnership that allowed us to prepare families and their children for an amazing school year. So how do we do that? We provided 700-plus backpacks to various students in District Four. So I want to thank from the bottom of my heart, the sponsors, the volunteers, the staff, my staff, the parents for bringing their children out, because it was a really hot day. And the backpacks not only had school supplies in them, but they also had books in them, thanks to Reading Heart, who donated books for the students to include in their backpacks. Also, we were able to provide hamburgers and hot dogs, a kid's meal, adult meal as well, I might add. And we want to thank Todd and Kirk and everyone at the FPOA, Fresno Peace Officers Association. They're great team partners. They worked really hard, they helped us accomplish our goals that day, and they also helped us on the National Night Out. We had a fantastic National Night Out. Our Parks Department, they cooled off our kids with snow cones. Detroit Center, Nick Butler was there, Fresno State, Jamba Juice, Maya Cinema, Nissan, FPOA again, Fresno PD, we have members here in the audience, thank you guys. Parks, Vista Villa Apartments, and we can't say thank you, thank you, thank you enough. This is an example of community service and community members coming together, and most importantly, benefiting the children, the next youth, and our leaders coming up in our community. So it was very exciting. On a more serious note, I want to take a moment to remind the council and the administration, staff, and everyone else, it's really difficult for us to put an agenda together when we get things at the last minute. So I had still some council president rules and procedures, so this is a friendly, Laura, my chief, said, "You might want to say it's a friendly reminder." I want to say it's a warning. If you don't get stuff in on our deadlines, I'm going to be a little bit hardcore on that, and it's not going to be part of the agenda, because it puts the entire staff under a ton of pressure, and then we get these items at the last minute. And just to show you something, this, this is today's agenda book without the additions. So when you have this to read, as well as the last-minute agenda additions, it makes it impossible for me, anyway, to make intelligent decisions based on all the information. So if you can't provide the information, we will not be listening to that item on the agenda. If it's truly an emergency, and I mean life or death, we can make an exception or two. So just to remind everybody, it's, we've been doing pretty well, but lately it's been kind of off, off the charts, so we need to get back on track, and I appreciate everyone's help in implementing that for the benefit of our entire community. So thank you for that. Next, we're going to go on to the consent calendar. Are there any council members who would like to pull any item for discussion? That discussion will be at 1:30 this afternoon. No one has punched up? Is there a motion? We have a motion and a second. Let me first go out to the community. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address any item on the consent calendar? As you do, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes after you give us your name and address for the record. Seeing none, with a motion, is there any opposition? Passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to go to schedule council. Can't do that, I'm going too fast. Okay, well, next we'll do unscheduled communication. Anyone wishes to comment on any item relative to the city of Fresno, this is your opportunity to do so. I do have some cards. Kathleen Holken, if you're here, please come forward. You wish to address the council on the issue of chickens, so give us your name and address. Pull that mic right down close to you, so we can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. This is my first time. My name's Kathleen Holken, I'm a retired licensed nurse, and my address is 1269 North Del Mar. My concern is that I went away on vacation, and I came back to the whole block at odds with each other, because there's three homes with chickens, and it's attracted rats, possums, you name it. We've had feral cats, domestic cats, and one half of the block is working together to trap the cats, fix them, and release. The other half is deciding not to. They're putting out, I've seen Anna Free's put out, and it's, I've seen, I've heard, but that's hearsay. I looked up, and I, I'm really concerned about my, our city. I love the tower district, and we've always had issues with, you know, the rat population, the squirrels, the mice, but this, allowing chickens, please, if you're considering that, take in consideration of everything they're attracting and the diseases. I looked up, and chickens also, I didn't realize that they also spread the Nile virus, the West Nile virus, and with their, and I didn't realize that they also spread to dogs and pigeons, they attract more mice. And so, I'm trying to come up with a positive solution, that if you do decide to allow families to have chickens in the city, maybe you'll consider a tax that, because you're going to need more inspectors, you're going to need more, you know, to watch- to need more inspectors, you're going to need more, you know, to watch the community for more illnesses. And I just, you know, I've had people tell me if this will open the door to other farm animals, like they want a cow because they want fresh milk, you know? So just please take that into consideration. I pre, it's an honor to stand before you and bring my concerns and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your very good presentation. Thank you very much. And there are two council members to my right are tower representatives, so I'm sure their offices will contact you and I'll give them their card with your information.
I have talked to them and they responded right away and, and thank you.
We're here to serve. Thank you very much. Next is David Swingle on High Speed Rail. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Greetings, Fresno City Council. David Schwegel with the U.S. High Speed Rail Association in Clovis. Your downtown area has progressed remarkably since I saw it for the first time in November 2007. It is proof that there is indeed hope for the world. Keep up the great work on your downtown area because I'm working diligently at trying to convince the California region of the American Society of Civil Engineers to hold their statewide infrastructure symposium here in Fresno in 2022 and also working diligently with getting the Western U.S. District of the Institute of Transportation Engineers to hold their Western District Annual Meeting here in Fresno in 2023. Second thought, in the era of frustration with consultants blowing budgets, engaging in creative change order composition on the High Speed Rail project that is leading to cost escalations and schedule elongations on the High Speed Rail project, I do want to remind you that you have a local firm here, Precision Civil Engineering and the Alliance Group, that delivered an extraordinary value to the taxpayers of California when they served as regional consultant on the Mercedes Sacramento section. They were the prime consultant and they had the perfect intersection of friends in high places, mindfulness to the big picture, and diligent research. And that needs to be the message that's conveyed to all consultants because we really need to pick up the pace here on the High Speed Rail project and get it down to Los Angeles well in advance of the 2028 Olympics. And third and finally, our friends in the U.S. Pacific Northwest and the Canadian Pacific Northwest are pulling for us. If you can shoehorn the dates of November 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th into your schedule, it might be worth catching a direct flight from FAT to Seattle on the 5th. And then the 6th, 7th, and 8th is when the Cascadia Rail Summit takes place on the Microsoft campus. Keeping in mind that Microsoft was one of many tech companies that has invested aggressively in Fresno, in the Seattle to Vancouver, B.C. High Speed Rail. They've been able to figure out specifically how to get tech to engage. What I encourage us to do is to come back here after engaging in that conference with messages on what we in the food capital of the world can do if we leverage High Speed Rail to make Fresno the perfect intersection of food agriculture and technology to address world hunger. And also, as the best kept lifestyle affordability secret in all of California, if we could convey the message on how accelerating High Speed Rail can help our state address its severe housing crisis. I hear that unmet housing needs in California are the same as the next rank of 49 states combined. So Cascadia Rail Summit, look for our friends in the Northwest for messaging on technology and the addressing of real world problems. Thank you.
Sir, that was the most informative three minutes we've had for a long time. You hit topics and nailed it. And I really, number one was your symposium aspect struck a chord with me. And I would recommend that you, when you go out those doors, make a left and go down at the end of the hall, go through that door, and ask to see the staff of Mayor Brand. They could put that in a motion, I think, and I'm sure my colleagues here on the far left would be happy to, to have that come to Fresno. That'd be fantastic. And don't let the secret out about us too far, about being a great value and a great place to live because we don't want a lot of overcrowding, okay? Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience and for being here. Next, we have Jesse. Loza?
I'm Loza.
Here you are. Come on down, sir. Give us your name and address. You have three minutes. And then next will be David Love and then we'll open it up to general comments.
Good morning. My name's Jaime Loza. I'm homeless, kinda. Long story, don't go out of time. I'm, I'm here, I'm here, God got some plan, all right, for Fresno. I don't even know it. But I do know one thing, Fresno city workers, not Fresno PD, much respect, not Fresno firemen, much respect, okay? It's the Fresno city workers. They're slothful, they're lazy, they're not doing their jobs, walk across the street to the bus stop. It's filthy, it's disgusting. The busty boats, this is homeless, this is downtown Fresno, and it's disgusting. They need it clean more. We got, we got that High Speed Rail that's going to be coming. It's coming. And what are they saying about Fresno? It's disgusting. I went to 7-Eleven last night. You should hear the things people talk about when they come to this city. How disgusting. I love Fresno. I love it. I gotta go other places, but I love Fresno. This is home. We need to stop being so disgusting. The Fresno city workers need to do their jobs that they're getting paid for, clean up for when the tourists has come here. It's beautiful. See what I'm saying? I'll talk to you guys later.
I'd just like to respond, I think our Fresno city workers are very, very diligent and, and I think the issue really is just people being responsible. Take your litter, put it in a trash can. If you have items that are spilled, address those. So I think it starts with personal responsibility and I think our city workers do a fantastic job. So next is Mr. Love, come on down.
Yeah, I want to echo that, too. I think our city workers do a great job, work very hard, and we need definitely more accountability for people who commit litter and trash, just like we see on the highways. I mean, that's not our city workers doing that. So I share your sentiments, Council President.
Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Love. Please give us your name and address and you'll have three minutes to address the council. Thank you for being here.
My name's David Love, number four. Address 5705 East Huntington, apartment 205, 93727. I'm watching over to Washington, D.C. Perez, Donald Trump. I'm watching over to Sacramento, Jared Brown. I'd like to echo a lot of audio stuff, but not too about the robot machines of audios. And watching all the way out to the Pentagon. We're talking about Terry. John Kerry's daughter, the dry bone of Satan, that's working with those monshong of six numbers of Satan's of Kongs. We're talking about Paula Yang, the dark royal Satan, the politician that lost, he owes debt to Jesus heaven, owes debt to Paula Yang, the dark royal Satan, that owes debt to Godfather from heaven. Terry, the dry bone Satan, owes way more debt of angels that are up in heaven. We're talking about equal balance of power in the White House. It's Jesus heaven's will. We're talking about World War IV. World War IV is Terry, the dry bone Satan of all machines. Machines are very slow, machines not accurate. David Love, number four, a true saint, from the monk population, the only one, the white The 100 of the 100 door. The heart on the mountain. The golden. Holy Spirit. Of the holy Trinity. Of the holy cross from all church of Christ. Satan Ministry is laughing over there. We're talking about Terry, the dry bone Satan. Ain't nobody playing around with Jesus heaven. They're seeing all the storms, waiting for the storm of lightning. And lightning will strike. Washington, D.C. don't believe it? They doubt Jesus heaven? I don't doubt. There is no PAST name, it does not reverse. We're talking about 21st century. I hear all you guys, audio of robots, trying to put foul languages.
Okay, Mr. Love.
I don't want to fold.
Your time is up and we thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Take care. Anyone else wish to make any comments during unscheduled communication? This is the opportunity for the public to address the council and actually the city of Fresno as well. Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here. Please give us your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. Aaron Foster, 2683 South Bardell, Fresno, California 93706. I was coming to address the purchasing of a $200,000 tank after being denied the $200,000 for a peace program. And I was wondering how that made sense and what we're going to do to implement other gun violence reduction strategies. I reached out, I got a card the last time I was here. I misplaced it, but I did run into HPs and called him three times to Noraville to meet with the mayor to see what we can do. I'm honestly saying that overpolicing hasn't been working. After the young lady, after the babies got shot, we deployed 50 police officers and people still are being shot. What are we going to do to address this? This is our city and our city has a problem that's being ignored. Gun violence is real. People die every year. People have been dying every year for decades. We do have a proven strategy because evidence shows that gun violence has reduced 53%. We're working with community and gang members. And if you notice, you haven't been hearing about the Bulldogs in the news either, we're also working with them. Because the need is so great, the community is stepping up and doing something that we need assistance with from our city. So I would like to see if I can schedule a real meeting, not the task force that the mayor always presents. We come up with a task force, no results. We have a proven strategy. And what saddens me even more is we have a $200,000 allotted for something that didn't have to be proven. Fresno already have a tank that we don't use. So I'm thinking that we could allocate that money to do something more effective and something that's being proven. With the two-year analysis, if you took the time to take it, you would see that the strategy has been working without any funding. So I'm wondering if we can do something besides strengthen our police force, which hasn't been so effective. I'm not saying that they're totally not effective and not needed, but we need to have some assistance from our community because we know how to reduce this problem. We have the potential to eradicate it if we get assistance from the city.
Very good, sir. Thank you much. Appreciate you being here.
Aaron, my office is happy to meet again and talk further about this issue. As you know, the council, this council during budget did approve a version of advanced peace and the funding for advanced peace. I'll remind the public that the administration was the one responsible for that program not happening or those funds being struck from the budget. So I continue to press on the mayor.
Yeah, I appreciate all of the support that I got from the city council, but I feel like I'm being ignored from our mayor because I've been reaching out to him, to Noraville.
City manager, in the last council meeting, the city manager committed to meeting with the advocates and the mayor to develop a proposal. Is there any follow-up to that commitment?
I'll have to check. I don't have an update at this point, but I can get back to you guys on it. Thank you.
Is it a way that I can leave my information so when you have follow-up that you can contact me because I haven't been effective trying to contact the mayor?
Sure. I'll give you a card.
Thank you. I got a card the last time. Can I just give you my number and give you my card?
Sure, I can write it down.
Thank you.
Member Soria, did you have a card?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of echo some of the comments that were made, but ask also the city manager if there's any status. I'm just wondering where the mayor is at on the issue because I know that while he didn't support the proposal that the community was advocating for, he did make some commitments to do something. There's obviously an issue happening nationwide and we have, we are impacted by some of those issues here locally when it comes to gun violence. So just wanted to see if there's any update in terms of where the mayor is at. Obviously, they haven't met with the community as committed before, but is this something that is being worked on?
As I stated a couple of seconds ago, I will have to get back to you on that.
Thank you all very much. Next, is there anyone else that'd like to say a few words? Mr. Love, you've had your opportunity, sir.
Say a couple of words.
No, no.
We're talking about today's date. It's August 23rd.
Okay, thank you, sir. Please have a seat. Anyone else like to come forward and address the council on any issue during this unscheduled communication?
Hi, Mr. Love.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Anyone else like to come forward? All right, we'll get back to our agenda and that, now it's, we have time at this moment to discuss the 10 o'clock item, which is a hearing to vacate Elgin and North Avenue, North James Avenue between Golden State Boulevard and State Route 99. This is in Council District Two. This is sponsored by Public Works. Good morning.
Good morning, Council President, council members and staff. My name's Jason Camet, Chief Surveyor, Public Works Department for the city of Fresno. I'm here today to ask the council to open the required public hearing for the vacation of Elgin Avenue and North James Street between Golden State Boulevard and State Route 99. This hearing was set by resolution of intent 1131D on, by consent on July 18th, 2019. The vacation is being requested by Double S Developments. The purpose of the vacation is to satisfy conditions of approval for parcel map 2017-12, which will create three viable parcels for development. And these streets were originally dedicated by the town of Herndon Map, which was recorded and filed in 1887. They were never developed. They were essentially rendered useless when State Route 99 came in and took a portion of James Avenue. That also turned Elgin into a dead-end street. Right now, it is a maintenance liability for the city and I think it's the, staff recommends the approval of this vacation and to open up the public hearing for discussion. I'll be here for questions if you need.
Thank you very much. Does anyone in the public wish to address this item? Please come forward. This is your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll bring it back here. District Two has not been filled yet, so I'll make your motion to approve, seconded by Member Chavez.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is the city going to receive any compensation for vacating the public property to the private property owner?
No. I think in these cases, it's a release of liability that we have for maintenance. If you're familiar with the area, it's full of weeds.
I understand the area, so is that our standard procedure to vacate property without any compensation?
When we have an easement right, that is the actual case. If we have a, if we own it in fee title, that's a different story. I think there is, there's some compensation and a resolution that allows for compensation at that point. And a lot of those cases are when we got, when we have, the city is relinquished right away from the state, which owned it in fee, which in turn, when we take control of that area, we now own it in fee. But as a general practice, if we own an easement right, which is just a right for us to actually put a public street in and improvements, we just remove that easement right and allow the underlying fee owner to develop the property as easily as fit.
Do you have any idea what the estimated value of that right-of-way property is?
I don't. That would be a real estate question. That would require an appraisal and different things to do along that nature. I'm not versed in that, so.
What about the liability? Do we know?
Well, right now, we have a maintenance liability. Since we have the easement rights there, it's, I just walked the site a couple of weeks ago and it's, you have people parking on it, trucks that park there, you have weeds that are overgrown into a dead-end street. Luckily, in that area, there's not a homeless factor that will cause any of those issues. But if you're familiar, it's But if you're familiar, it's right by the Holiday Inn Express, just north of Herndon, right off of 99. It also, it's adjacent to 99, so half of James Street is just cut off, because 99 and the state took control of that land when they realigned it from Golden State to 99.
So?
Currently, we're not maintaining it.
It doesn't look like it's being maintained, or hasn't been maintained in the last six months. Double S Developments are, they're performing a parcel map that will include these areas, and they are the underlying fee owners. So they own the land, and what they're asking for us to do is relinquish the street, public street rights, so they can actually develop this area for commercial development, which is in process right now, I believe.
So if I'm understanding this correct, we are just vacating the easement rights for access?
We are vacating the-
And we do not own-
Yeah, no, we do not own the land. In this area, we do not own the land, in most areas, 95% of the streets that we have in the city, all we have is a public street easement, which allows us to develop that and put public improvements on that.
This case, the value, if it was of value for a street, we would not relinquish the rights. In this case, because of what has happened in that area, we, there's not a value to the city that we are aware of.
If there was any future value in putting a street there, the feasibility study would have brought that out. So as it is right now, it's a half-street that's really a triangle portion on James, and a dead-end street on Elgin. And it wouldn't serve any public circulation purpose, in my opinion.
Okay, folks, we have a motion, a motion by myself, President Capriolio, seconded by council member Chavez, any opposition? Seeing none, passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you for the answers. 10:10 AM TEFRA hearing, to hear and consider multifamily housing revenue bonds, sponsored by Finance. Good morning, Director Lima.
Good morning, council members, Mike Lima, Finance Director, Controller. Before you today is a resolution approving the issuance of no more than 15 million in tax-exempt bonds by the California State Communities Development Authority, which will be used for the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of the Pleasant Village Apartments located at 3669 North Pleasant Avenue. Under the Tax Equity and Financial Responsibility Act, or TEFRA, the governing body, the entity where the facilities that gain benefit from the bond issues are located, must hold a hearing to receive public testimony and approve the issuance of the refunding bonds. This hearing was noticed on the city's website on July 30th, 2019, and as of today, we've received no testimony either for or against the proposed action. Payment of these bonds will be the sole responsibility of the California statewide communities development authority from their revenue streams. The city will have no obligation or liability associated with this facility or these bonds. Staff recommends the council conduct the required TEFRA hearing, and at its conclusion, adopt the resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the California statewide communities development authority. Thank you, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, anyone in the public wish to address this item, please come forward? We have three minutes, seeing none, back up here, see council member, none have punched up? Is there a motion? Motion by member Chavez, seconded by member Soria, any opposition? Seeing none, passes 6-0, 10:20 AM scheduled communication, appearance by Daniel Laurenti, to discuss his younger brother's grave. Side, good morning, sir, thank you for being here. Give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Daniel Laurenti, my address is 910 East Floridora, in Tower District, council member, Ms. Meraldas. And I'm speaking today on behalf of my younger brother, who was severely wounded in Afghanistan in 2011. And he fought long and hard, he was a double amputee, landed on a grenade, and ultimately didn't end up making it, and is buried out at Belmont Memorial. We got him back here to Fresno, which is where we grew up, and you know, it's very difficult when things like this happen, because we want to get past, it never gets easier, we just learn to deal with it better every day, especially for my mother. And going out to Belmont and seeing just the continued desecration of graves out there, needles everywhere, there's homeless population, albeit not there, you know, it's not against the law to be homeless, but it is an issue out there. And I can't help but think it has to do with, you know, politics and high-speed rail going through that area, and you have this population that has nowhere to go, and if my brother has a bench there, and it's shady, it makes sense that they would go there. But it just, I don't think that this issue has been raised in this sense. And the last time we were out there, two weeks ago, you know, for an individual to be urinating on a United States Marine's grave is completely unacceptable. And my mother was very intent on moving him to Arlington National Cemetery immediately. His partner in the military was Senator McCain's son, Jimmy, so we want him moved. And I asked my mom to please give me a little bit of time to put it to Fresno, to see what can be done by way of ensuring that not only my brother's grave, but everybody that's out there is, it has a hollow ground, that it's dignified with respect. And I think right now, it is, it's been overlooked, and there's been initial steps, I think, that have been taken, I've been in contact with Dolores, and she's been very, very fantastic, and as well as Sergeant Miller from the Police Department, and doing sweeps. So I wanted to put it to the council, just as a, an awareness factor more, to see what can be done by way of the districts, because I think it affects all of them, my mother does live in Paul's district, so that's why I wanted to speak this morning to you.
Thank you for your comments, we'll note that and communicate with appropriate parties through the city attorney, or city manager's office. And my brother, sorry for your loss, my brother was a corporal in the Marine Corps, served in Vietnam. He's gone as well, so I understand, and thanks to your family and our blessings. Thank you for being here.
Council president, if I may, Daniel, I do want to personally apologize to you on behalf of the city, for the experience that you've had in the private cemeteries. I know our homeless task force has been out there a couple of times to clean up the mess, and it's a continuing problem. We are trying to figure out what kind of permanent fencing the private cemeteries can put up, because it looks like the homeless problem is going to continue in that area. There's very little supervision and patrolling that happens at night. We are opening up the first shelter on September 3rd, and that will be the first of a series of shelters we will have somewhere to actually direct individuals to. And I'm hopeful that that will ensure that they're not hanging out at cemeteries in the evenings, and engaging in that behavior. But do want to apologize on behalf of the city of Fresno.
And I do want to, if it could be noted, that so far, council members have been very active in the response, and I think that it was just more, I didn't want my brother to leave, I want to be able to, I mean, I have kids here, you know, I'm staying here, I'm graduating Fresno State, it's my last year. I want them to just be able to go out there and see how awesome of an uncle they had. So I don't want him going anywhere, and that's why I'm bringing this forward to you.
Absolutely, thank you for that again.
Thank you, Daniel, also.
Excuse me, member Brett, Brett Affil punched up first, you have the floor.
Okay, so this Belmont's private? Privately. Okay, so the thing I'm wondering, I mean, obviously, we have law enforcement, we need to utilize our law enforcement. What is the private owners doing about maintaining their cemetery? Do you know?
I do not know what the private owners are doing.
I have.
I mean, do you know, sir?
I've reached out to them, and they equate it to it just being an issue that they can just say that they are visiting that grave right there. And then they're not trespassing if it's during normal business hours, even though it is private. The trespass doctrine or law that's in place there just allows for, if we can verify, that they are not supposed to be there. Furthermore, he's buried in Temple Beth Israel, which is a Jewish section of that particular cemetery, and they have their personal landscapers landscapes, so that is more private than I'd say just the actual Mountain View Cemetery. But even at that, you can put one foot on Temple Beth Israel and one foot on, so it really doesn't, it doesn't, it's not an extra layer of benefit. There's no extra security that's added with respect to that. And I think that overall, there just needs to be a fence, I don't know what it may be, but some type of security measures to protect the hollow ground. And that's my understanding, is that Sergeant Miller from the Fresno Police Department said that he was going to speak with both the owners of the railroad track, yes, a property lining the railroad tracks, as well as Mountain View, because that's where some of the encampments have been, to see what can be done in that area, but to my knowledge, I haven't heard of any conversations that have taken place yet.
We have Sergeant Miller here, and it might be good to get some status from him directly.
Sure.
Please see the floor, Sergeant Miller, thank you.
Then I'd like to hear from the city attorney about the rights that the owners have of this cemetery, because I think we're gonna have to somehow be working together to address this problem.
Sergeant, thank you for being here, sir.
My correction's Lieutenant Miller.
Actually, Lieutenant Beckwith.
Oh, sorry.
Good morning, Sergeant Miller is here too, so he's free to answer questions. I'm the commander with the homeless task force, so I'm here today to give you a brief update on what's been done, and answer any questions that you may have. In regards to the question, as far as the ownership at the cemetery, we have been in contact with them, they've been very cooperative. They have taken steps already to, as council member Arias mentioned, with fencing, they've erected, or began erecting, a cinder block wall on the south end of the property, that we had identified as an area that the homeless were encroaching the property upon. So they've been very, very cooperative with us. They did agree to get a letter on file with us that allows us to take enforcement action for trespassing issues. So we have that letter on file now, so we're able to move forward on that. In fact, in the last few weeks, we've made six arrests for trespassing out there. So as far as that goes, I think we're moving in the right direction, and we have good lines of communication with them right now.
Okay, and then just from the city attorney, what would you add? I mean, that sounds fantastic, and I appreciate that, city attorney, what can you add to this?
Well, it sounds like the police department is on the right track. If there are any code changes that might be helpful, we can look at that.
Okay.
And currently, because it's private property, they can remove those people, correct, or have you removed those people?
Right.
Correct, if they're found in violation of the penal code 602, they've been asked to leave, they're refusing to, or they've been told on previous occasions, yes, we can take enforcement action.
Right, so they're not allowed to be there, if the ownership does not want them there, they can simply call, tell them they leave, if they don't leave, they call you, and you can have them leave?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the other thing is the desecrating the bench, so I'm wondering about the owners, you know, watching that and taking care of that, because that's unacceptable as well. But I think our police department are doing yeoman's work in terms of dealing with this issue. So it's, I mean, it's a terrible situation, and I appreciate you coming before us today, and I honor your brother's sacrifice, and thank you and his family for that. But this is completely unacceptable, so you bringing it forward, there are police working with the owners, I think that's the right strategy.
Very good, thank you Lieutenant Sergeant for being here, appreciate all your hard work, day in and day out, member Soria?
I didn't really have anything else today, I just want to thank Daniel for, I know that you've been working both with District 3 and District 1, and you live in my district. We will stay in communication with our police department, and you know, if anything else comes up, please, I know that council member Arias and my office are ready to help in whatever way that we can, thank you.
Member Arias, you punched up again.
Yes, I just want to say thank you for everyone, and also just caution us as a council and as a city that a lot of our homeless veteran, a lot of our homeless are veterans themselves, and there is a lot of veterans laid there. So we want to continue to be very cautious, very sensitive to, as we do the enforcement of the private cemeteries. I know that's what everybody wants, but I just want to remind us of the fact that we have a lot of homeless veterans in Fresno.
Thank you for being here again, sir, and best to your family. Okay, we'll move on to the 10:10 TEFRA hearing, to hear and consider, oh, sorry, we just did that. 10:30 item, we're right on time. Continue hearing to consider plan amendment and rezone application. This is in District 3, and it's sponsored by Finance.
Council president, if I may, just to give the council a little overview, I've asked staff to present, to give us a formal presentation on what the relocation of the Darling Rendering Plant means. It is a significant historic investment by the city of Fresno. We're still not done yet, there's still several more steps that have to take place for us to officially declare this as a victory for everyone. But I did want the council, especially the newbies, to have a full and comprehensive understanding of what it entails to address the significant environmental impact for the neighborhoods of West Fresno. And after you present, if we could have Ms. Mary Curry address the council also, and then we can move on.
So the newbie is Mr. Esparza, so I guess he's talking about you. And you, and before we begin, I just wanted to indicate my appreciation for Oliver Baines III. He served eight years on the council, this was one of his projects that he started, and wanted to see it to the end. And I wanted to acknowledge him today, and credit him, as well as our staff and people here. He's the one that started it, got the traction, he brought it forward every time he had an opportunity to succeed. It was a very difficult proposition, and his persistence, perseverance, preparation brought us to where we are today. So Oliver Baines III, if you're listening, thank you, sir, you are a great council member, and I miss you. And the people of this chamber, thank you for doing all you've done with the Darling Plant. With that, the floor is yours.
Good morning, council, Lori Favini with the city attorney's office. I'll be introducing the item and providing an overview of the disposition agreement and development agreement. Before you today, for the Darling Rendering Plant relocation, you have several items. Plan amendment, rezone application, conditional use permit, the disposition agreement and development agreement I mentioned, and the environmental impact report. In terms of the big picture, the Darling Rendering Plant will be relocated near the wastewater treatment facility, and the existing plant will be permanently decommissioned. You'll see on a later slide, a map showing both the current location and the new location. This project was approved by council in 2017, but was delayed as a result of litigation. And as a result of that litigation, the project has been relocated slightly to the south, and the city has completed an EIR. Council is being asked today to approve several things contained in the agreement. The city will provide the land and entitlements, the utility, infrastructure, and improvements, property and sales tax rebates, and impact fee waivers for the new location. Darling, oh, go back. Darling will construct a new plant and decommission the existing facility. They will also place a deed restriction on the property of the existing facility, prohibiting future use as a rendering plant. escrow is expected to close by the end of the year, with construction to be completed two and a half years following close of escrow. Here are the project contributions, both one-time and over the course of the agreement and the 30-year service commitments. And what still needs to happen, Darling is seeking $9 million net target in New Markets Tax Credits. The city approved as part of the budget to provide up to $1 million if Darling does not receive 95% of that target amount, as per the agreement. Darling does expect to achieve that target amount, but they are still negotiating with three different CDEs. Darling is seeking a property tax rebate from the county, which is on the county supervisor's agenda for August 20th, and Darling will seek a permit from the Air District. With that, I will turn it over to Chris Lang.
Thank you very much.
Morning, Council President Capriolio, council members, Chris Lang from the Planning and Development Department. As you can see here on your screens, this is the location of both the existing Darling Plant, which is located on the, near the intersection of Church and Fruit Avenues. You can see it's located within the city proper, and substantial development has occurred in the vicinity. The proposed location is going to be at the property owned by the city, at the wastewater treatment plant, on, you know, West Jensen Avenue. Here's another aerial of the vicinity of the existing plant. Again, you can see that there is residential, and also a high school in close proximity to the rendering plant, you know, as close as 900 feet. And here is an aerial of the proposed location. You can see it's adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant and there are several rural residences in the area and then also mainly agriculture surrounding the property. For the project summary, the plan amendment proposes to amend the Fresno general plan from public facilities to heavy industrial. The rezone application proposes to amend the zone map from public and institutional to heavy industrial. And conditional use permit application proposes the construction of the new rendering facility. Also, the disposition agreement, development agreement is between the city and Darling for the relocation of the plant. Here is a map of the proposed planned land use. As you can see, currently it is zoned, public facilities for wastewater is, or I'm sorry, planned for, and then is proposed to be zoned, or planned for, heavy industrial. Again, similarly, here's the zone map. Existing is public and institutional, proposed heavy industrial. And then here is a site plan. So you can see the properties or the proposed facility is going to be located at the southwest portion of the property, abutting the wastewater treatment plant. And now I would like to introduce Mike Parker from Ascent Environmental.
Good morning, council members. Mike Parker, Ascent Environmental. I'm the project manager for the EIR for the project. I'm just going to go over a few slides to explain the SEQA process and the findings of the EIR that we prepared. So we prepared an EIR for this project and the process began with scoping and release of NOP in the fall of 2018. We released a draft EIR mid-May of this year. The final EIR was published in July and this project went to planning commission in August 7th, just a little while ago. And tonight we're here to, for the council to consider certification of the EIR and approval of the project. So the environmental impact report included, oh, sorry. The environmental impact report included a comprehensive analysis of all the environmental issue areas required by the California Environmental Quality Act. A lot of those environmental issues the EIR concluded were less than significant and did not require mitigation. Others, the EIR identified as potentially significant and identified mitigation measures that would reduce those impacts to less than significant. And those impacts include light and glare, odors, unknown cultural resources, three different bird species, hazardous materials, stormwater drainage, and noise. However, the environmental impact report did identify two significant and unavoidable impacts and a significant unavoidable impact is an impact where mitigation measures are not available to reduce the impact all the way to a level that's below the threshold of significance. And these impacts include conversion of important farmland. So for that impact, we, the EIR identified a mitigation measure that would require conservation of farmland offsite. But as you know, conservation of a resource cannot compensate for a loss of a resource. So the EIR concluded that the impact was significant and unavoidable there. For the cumulative traffic impacts, the project in a cumulative scenario with development in the region would contribute to a significant impact, a level of service for three intersections located in the county. Mitigation measures are available to reduce that to a less than significant impact, but because the city doesn't have jurisdiction and cannot enforce implementation of those measures, the EIR conservatively concludes that the impact is significant and unavoidable. The EIR also includes three alternatives to the project. The first is a SEQA-required alternative that's the no-project alternative. That alternative assumes that the project site would remain in its current condition and that relocation of the rendering plant would not occur and it would remain in operation at its current, in its current location. The second was an offsite alternative where the expanded project as proposed in the environmental, as proposed would be located in a, in a different industrial zone site. The third alternative is a no-expansion alternative where the project would still be relocated but not include the expansion that's proposed. Comments were received during the draft EIR process. Two agencies submitted comments. They were the County of Fresno and the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. The county's comments mostly concerned hazardous materials, well abandonment, and traffic. And the Air District's comments related mostly to health, risk assessment, screening, and odors. And the written responses to those agencies are provided in the final EIR. The final EIR includes changes to the draft EIR. These revisions were minor. They included primarily slight revisions to the odor mitigation text based mostly on the Air District's comments. The toxic air contaminant analysis was revised. It mostly included adjustments to make the analysis more specific. This actually reduced the impact that was identified to the EIR and took it from potentially significant to less than significant. And then there were other minor changes that are shown in the final EIR. Whenever EIR identifies a significant unavoidable impact, the lead agency is required by SEQA to adopt a statement of overriding considerations, which is essentially explaining why the benefits of the project outweigh its unavoidable effects to the environment. In this case, the benefits relate to social benefits and this relates mostly to moving the rendering plant farther away from existing residences and schools. It also has environmental benefits as it would reduce exposure of sensitive receptors by increasing technology of the, of the equipment. And also economic benefits by generating jobs.
All right. So staff recommends that council takes the following actions to certify the final EIR. Approve the plan amendment application, which proposes to amend the general plan from public facilities to heavy industrial. Introduce and adopt a bill for the rezone application proposing to rezone from public and institutional to heavy industrial. Approve the conditional use permit, proposing the construction of the new facility. And introduce the bill for the disposition agreement and development agreement.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Your entire team, job well done.
Counsel, I was going to jump in here right at the end on the summary. Of course, our offices have been involved in this project for the last six years. It's been an extremely important and high priority project. And then, of course, I wanted to thank the concerned citizens of West Fresno. Without their assistance, it wouldn't have happened and their motivation for the project. Of course, leadership council for justice and accountability, Darling itself, the county, dozens of city officials, almost every department involved, our mediator, Lee Jacobson, and of course, the city council.
Thank you. Again, I think you, we forgot one critical person, that's Oliver Baines III, who led that charge for six years on this very dais. So with that, Member Arias, you wish to speak again?
Yes, I'd just like to make a motion to approve and acknowledge that Member Soria has been part of the mediation team since day one and also ask Ms. Curry to address the council before we officially take a roll call vote.
Member Soria, you had a comment?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I just wanted to also echo the big thanks. You know, it's amazing how time flies. I remember my first year and I believe it just within, even in the first month as a council member. Oliver asked me to sit as part of the council committee and I'm proud today that, you know, five years into my tenure here as a council member that we actually are not only taking a symbolic vote today, but a vote that really includes some tremendous action and really, I credit the community because you guys have been extremely patient. But I also appreciate the fact that you guys have held us accountable and that this is the least that we could do. I also want to thank the Darling folks for working with us through this process. It hasn't been easy, but I believe that really is a testament of what happens when community is involved and when community takes ownership of their own destiny in their neighborhoods. Thank you so much for the work that you guys have done.
Member Chavez?
I can just have staff answer two, two quick questions. Whoever wants to take that, maybe you, Jennifer. So what is, about, I think it was about six years ago when I was staff, we went out there on an August afternoon and the stench that was coming from the place was just crazy. Here we are today now and we're finally trying to fix that. So I know the residents have been waiting for far longer than that. What is the actual timeline from when they walk? Because I saw the SEQA timeline. But what's the timeline for them to actually transition over there away from the neighborhood and go operational on the new site?
The council member, great question. The performance timeline is attachment five to the development agreement and essentially from point of today to construction, we're looking at about two, two years.
Probably about two and a half years realistically.
Two and a half years, right. So there's Air District approvals, there's closing on the, on the financing. Then there would be grading and then they'd begin construction. Then they'd have to test and get certification of the plant before they could move operations. And I believe they have representatives here if you have more specific questions.
That actually, that actually works. And then what is the, what is the plan for that vacant property after they move? What is, what is the plan for that?
So there, right now, they cannot, it cannot be reused as a rendering facility. It was rezoned to office, so any new use would have to comply with the new development code.
Okay. Well, I want to congratulate the residents. It's been a long, long, long couple of decades. And it actually was Councilmember Baines that took me out there and we rode down the window and that was an interesting experience, but I can imagine for folks that live across the street from that to have to endure that for such a long time. But no more questions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The screen is clear, so we'll take it out to the public and, good morning. Please give us your name and address. Thanks for being here.
Council President, Mr. Capriolio, and council members and city and members of the community. I'm here to say thank you, first of all, to all of those who've been involved. But I want to give you just a little historical background on the evolution of Fresno. I moved here in 1956 and at the time when we moved here, there were two grocery stores in our community, a lot of small businesses. The airport was a redwood building. This community hospital was a white building. Fig garden had fig trees with figs on them. And West Fresno was now declining. So we're happy to be here today to consider the new possibilities for our community. The loss of the above situations increased the devastation in our community. The Darling Plant has been there for many years, even before I moved here. And historically, these plants are located in communities of color and low income. So most of the time, people in those situations don't have time nor the commitment and sometimes not the know-how or the staying ability to get involved in trying to change things in their community. But we feel this is very important and we've had a lot of help and a lot of support in trying to get this done. We've had, we've been, we've had three mayors that I'm aware of in the process, several city council members, Mr. Baines the last one, and now Mr. Arias, and the entire city of Fresno. But my, it's always been my premise that if any part of the city is in pain or is hurting, all the city needs to be aware and concerned and we thank you for that. There's still much to be done and we know that it's not quite, not quite over the finish line yet, but we're holding out for the finish. And I'd like to, first of all, thank all of those who've been involved, city council members, all the city people, Darling folks that have been involved, our legal council, and our members. And I'd like to thank those who are not members of West Fresno but who care enough about all of us that they would be involved to see the change. As I said earlier, anytime a part of the city is in, in pain, all of us need to show concern. Because when one, when all is well, we're all doing better. I'd like at this moment, if you will allow me, to ask those in the audience who are members of West Fresno, support West Fresno, care about Fresno, to just stand and be recognized. We thank you for your commitment. I've personally been involved in this for almost 15 years and it takes a lot of time and a lot of energy to keep going after that much time is involved. But we care enough about Fresno that we want to see it to continue to grow and we thank you for your concern that you've shown for West Fresno. However late it may be, we still appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council President, before we take a vote.
Let's finish public comment, please. Next, we have Kyle Lopez Schmidt. You presented a card. Please come forward. Give us your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, City Council. Kyle Lopez Schmidt, representing Community Vision, 2600 Ventura Street. Community Vision is one of the CDEs that is contributing new market tax credit allocation for the project. Your vote today is a key step in the entitlement process for us to be able to move forward in the financing of the project. So appreciate your yes vote in this, in this case. Our organization has allocated $11 million of new market tax credits from a pool of $60 million of credits that we received two years ago in allocation. It's a rare thing for our organization to do this type of project and also a rare condition for our organization to hold on to credits more than a year for a project. And I think that shows that our commitment to Southwest Fresno and having an impact in the racial and economic inequity that that community has experienced for decades and is a crucial step in, in moving that forward. Normally, our, our credits go towards community facilities, affordable housing-type projects. And this we saw as a, through the education of our organization from Ms. Curry and leadership council and other community members, understood that this was a crucial step to making any impact in Southwest Fresno, that this really unlocks the development potential on restoring that community. So want to highlight that as well as, you know, my personal history with the project, being aware of it from seventh grade, attending Computech Middle School. And the aroma, the, you know, aroma odor that was coming from that plant was a key step in my growth in understanding equity in our community that at the end of the day, I got to take my, the bus home to my Tower District neighborhood, but residents of Southwest Fresno did not get to leave, you know, and were impacted by that, that odor throughout their, you know, whole living day. So appreciate your, your support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to come forward and address this issue? This is the opportunity. I'd love to hear from you. Okay, if that will close, public comment. And first up on the screen is Gary Brederfield. Member Brederfield, it's your opportunity.
Okay, thank you. First of all, Mary Curry, eloquent words as always and it's very true, this community's been unfairly treated and unfairly burdened for a long time with the Darling Plant. And so I'm, I'm happy to support this today. I also know so many people have been fighting this fight for a long time. I know Councilmember Arias has picked up the fight, will represent you well, but also want to recognize Councilmember Baines, who spent many years of his term fighting to rectify this and successfully started what was really going to be a successful conclusion. And I, it will be a successful conclusion, so. It will be a successful conclusion, so happy to support this today and rectify a wrong that's been taking place for a long time.
Thank you, Member Bretterfield. Screen is clear. I echo the comments by my colleagues. And again, it was about six and a half years ago when Member Baines brought us into a closed session, and he absolutely would not take anything but an absolute yes in support of the process. And from that, we went to the city attorney, and his team started the process, and it was, it was very difficult and long and arduous. And Darling as well. Darling stepped up and helped as well get through this process. So I really want to thank Oliver again. He was an inspiration for me with his diligence and his perseverance. He just wouldn't give up. I mean, I represent Fresno State Bulldogs. He should be on the logo. That's how strong he felt about this issue, representing all of you out there and the entire community of Fresno, as well as District Three. So Oliver Baines, congratulations. Yeah, someone said harassment. He was, he was, he was a warrior, let me tell you that. So anyway, I'd be happy to support this. Thank you for being here. Member Arias, for the third time, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilmember, Council President Capriolio. I just wanted to thank a couple of people in the audience. You know, I've only been here six months and had the pleasure of being in mediation a few times. And I can tell you from personal experience, it is a very difficult family meeting that happens. So thank you to our mediator for being patient and letting emotions and really difficult conversations take place. I do want to thank Ms. Curry and Dr. Curry, Pastor Lewis, who are also in the mediation team. It's been a lot of difficult conversations. You've demonstrated the patience, the humility, and the leadership to look past, you know, unnecessary remarks at times, unnecessary shots across the bow, while still maintaining the ultimate goal. And it is those small conversations in that mediation process that has gotten us here today. So thank you to Councilmember Baines for, you know, beginning this process. But thank you for continuing the process and not letting any of us off the hook. With that, I call for the vote.
Okay, we will do an electronic vote. Member Arias, did you want to, fourth time, you want to stand? You're good? All right, good. Screen is clear. So if you'll punch up, my colleagues will see the screen and the results. It is unanimous. Congratulations to all those that engaged in the hard work and perseverance. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. Next, we have a 10:30 item. Consider a Second Amendment agreement to the housing successor and the Neuen Frasier Capital LP. This is by Marlene.
Thank you, and good morning.
Thank you for being here, and I gave a little sermon, if you will, lecture on timeliness with addendums and additions.
Thank you.
So please help us with that, if you would. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The floor is yours. Thank you.
Good morning. The Park at Fresno has prepared a budget analysis indicating a gap of $659,298 and has requested a grant in that same amount. A Second Amendment to the DDA provides for the housing successor to fill that gap from low, moderate-income housing.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I need someone up here. We only have three members. So I guess we'll have a, because of people walking out, we'll have to take a brief recess.
Councilmember Sorry has a conflict on this matter, so she has to step out.
Well, the other members are, okay, thank you. We can proceed. Thanks. Sorry to interrupt you, but we have to follow the procedure.
Do we have another? Okay. So the low, to provide the funds through the low, moderate-income housing funds amount for the purpose of developing 10 affordable rental residential units that will be restricted to folks at 50% of AMI for a period of 55 years. And the amendment also sustains the contribution of land from the housing successor. So that concludes staff report. The developer amendment, Neuen, is with us this morning also. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A member, I mean, sorry, Member Sloan, City Attorney Sloan.
I was just announcing the conflict.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was going pretty fast. Thank you. Next is Member Bretterfield.
Yeah, so when did this, this first DDA begin?
I believe it was 2016. Let me quickly look. 2016, that's correct.
Okay, so this is, I thought this was planned before 2016, this whole project?
The DDA with this developer was in February of 2016. The planning, in terms of planning a South Stadium project, that dates back many years. You have mixed use in that region, in the south of the, at that time, mall area.
Okay, when you say it goes back many years, how many years?
Well, it was part of a redevelopment plan for many years. You may recall Forest City was one of the first developers that looked at that area. But there was not a finalized DDA in place until Neuen Frasier stepped forward.
But Neuen Frasier, though, as I recall, were planning this before 2016. If I'm not mistaken, I could be mistaken, but it seems like there are plans involving them specifically for this project.
They, there was an RFP issued for this project prior to 2016. I don't have that exact date with me. But there was an RFP issued for the project. There were several respondents, and through a council committee, Neuen Frasier, they were selected.
Okay. Did it always involve this part of low-income housing as a part of this plan? Or did that change at some point?
It always contemplated affordable housing, and in fact, this project is largely supported by a state Affordable Housing Sustainable Community Loan and Grant combination. However, I do want to add that of the 54 units, only 10 are restricted for affordability. The balance of those units, 44, are for traditional, non-affordable, if you will, or market rate, excuse me, market rate housing. So that's one of the actual assets of the project. It combines private sector, private market rate housing, along with affordable housing as well.
Okay. And so how long has it been where, as part of the DDA, there's been 54 units, 10 of which were supposed to be the low-income housing? Has that been part of the 2016 DDA, or did that change at some point?
During, at the initial DDA, or in the initial DDA, I think the proposed scope was 50 units and with 10 affordable units, the same...
It was 50 units, you said?
Yes, and it's increased by four units, I believe.
Okay, and did that include the 10 units were going to be?
Yes, yes, yes.
So that's been from the very beginning?
Yes.
Okay. So now we're finding out somehow there's a shortfall, and it doesn't pencil?
That's correct.
Did it, it penciled in 2016, but 2019 it's not penciling?
In 2016, yes, the project that was contemplated at that time, it penciled.
Okay, but the only thing that's different is four market units. So what changed?
As the developer did further budget analysis based on increasing construction costs, increasing just costs associated with the business, putting this forward, the costs associated with the lengthy application process, they're constantly updating their pro forma, and this has been the result.
So why does the city have to come up with $659,000 because it doesn't pencil for them?
You don't. That's a policy call that we're recommending because from the housing successor's point of view, excuse me, from the housing successor's point of view, we're able to get 55 years in affordable covenants for people at 50% of AMI, which is very low income. And doing the math, we're able to do that for approximately $70,000 per unit. This council is familiar with the cost of units. You know, they range up to $400-plus thousand. Our share is going to be around $70,000 for the contribution that we're proposing today. So we think that the consideration is very reasonable because we are tasked, we are tasked with spending that, those affordable housing funds for, at least 30% must go for folks earning 30% of AMI, and at least 50% must go for folks earning under 60% of AMI. This, this meets state-required goals, and it is, we think, a good value for the money. In addition, the project has been able to leverage non-local funds from the state of California. So Fresno, I think, enjoys contributions for other entities. So the layering, the leveraging of funds is, I think, well demonstrated in this project.
Okay, but again, Marlene, it changed. Everything you said was the same in 2016, but we didn't have to come up with $659,000. Everything you just said was the same, except now the developers are coming saying, there's a shortfall, and we want you to plug it, you, the city, the agency.
That's correct. I'm going to ask Mr. Neuen, if you will, the developer, to come up and speak to the shortfall as well.
If I may remind my council colleagues that we're required to utilize housing funds on housing projects, and we routinely provide additional funding for housing projects that would otherwise not be built because of the increased cost in construction and the fact that affordable housing is not something that the market rate developers would do out of, you know, their charity. It is a requirement for us to build affordable housing with the Affordable Housing Funds. From the Redevelopment Agency, a few months ago, we allocated about $2 million to a French River Creek development to build affordable housing units, which was the right decision for the city. So I just want to remind everyone that these are Affordable Housing Funds, required to be spent on affordable housing projects.
And I would like to remind my council colleagues that we're supposed to be wise about how we spend our money, and that when changes take place, we ought to be asking why changes are taking place. And when 2016 it penciled, but 2019 it doesn't pencil, and people come to the city asking for money to plug that, we ought to be asking why that is the case. Having said that, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Members of the council, Mr. President, I'm Mehmet Neuen. I'm a member of the development team of Neuen Frasier Properties LLC. My two partners could not be here with us today, so they've asked the oldest member to represent the partnership. Yes, you're correct. This project has changed since 2016. The original project that was delineated in the RFP was a five-story, 50-unit complex with much larger units and many more amenities. When we did our budgeting, when we actually got an architect, and engineers, and economists to do the economic, the cost analysis on the cost of the construction, the costs were significantly higher than what we budgeted. We did make some significant changes to the project. We took one floor off. We made the units slightly smaller. We removed some amenities, and we've taken the project down to what we believe is an acceptable threshold. Keep in mind that the city of Fresno hired Kaiser Marston to do the economic analysis on this project. We hired an economist, Alan Cotton, out of Southern California, to also do an economic analysis. And we've hired other economists and engineers and architects to value-engineer the project to get us to where the point where we are now. Yes, there's a shortfall. The shortfall is the $650,000. We've done everything we can do to try to value-engineer and get this project within an acceptable level of return, and we can't get there without this additional capital. We are, it's not, it is what it is. The project is saddled with prevailing wage. There is an affordable component that reduces the cash flow in the project, and when it gets down to the end of the day, the return today is not acceptable. So I hope that answers your question.
And there's no other way to change your project, so you're not...
We've done everything, short of making this a crummy-looking project, which I don't want to build, I don't see any other way of value-engineering the project to take the cost down.
Okay. So, yeah, but the only difference with your project today is four units you've added that are for the market rate units?
Well, no, that's not true. There was five floors originally, and there's an incremental increase in the cost of construction when you go five floors versus four floors. So one of the first things we did was remove a floor. We increased the number of units by decreasing the overall size of the units, which are in keeping with what everything else that's in downtown that the other developers have built. So yes, we made some expensive and rather significant changes to the original project to try to get the cost in line.
Okay, so you've made expensive changes. Why are you not just dealing with the fact that you've chosen to make more expensive changes?
Let me rephrase. We made, we spent a lot of money between architects and engineers and contractors to try to deliver a product that was an acceptable product that fit within a budget. So when I say we made expensive changes, we spent a lot of money to get to this point to try to value-engineer this project to make economic sense.
Okay. So why, since you had the DDA 2016, why have you not started any building at all? I mean, why are we still reconfiguring, coming up with shortfalls? I mean, what's the problem with that?
Well, it's, the basic problem is in the last three years, costs have increased. There have been some significant increases in materials, in labor, overall cost. The rents have not seen the same level of appreciation as the construction cost. So in three years, things change. In three years from now, things could change again.
Right, and in three years, you could be coming back saying, we have another shortfall that we need plugged.
I don't plan on doing that.
I know you don't plan on it, but it can happen.
I don't, you know...
You didn't plan on coming here in 2016, three years later, and asking for...
That's correct.
$700,000.
Right.
Right. And so that's the problem I have with this, because there are people who do build downtown, and Bitwise is an example, that don't seek money from the city. I don't believe we've ever given them a dime. And I'm just troubled that, you know, we have DDNA's, and three years later, there's shortfalls of almost $1 million and coming back to the city. And then, you know, frankly, I'm also concerned that we've had some problems with one of the developers with some accounting practices, and we're being asked to give money here. And I don't know if we've done the actual accounting and analysis of the numbers that are being presented. Have we done that, Marlene?
This is a joint project with the city, and we, we, the successor agency, have gone over the pro formas, but with respect to the project you're referring to, no, we've not been involved in that.
City manager, what do you have to say about this?
Which project are we talking about?
The one that's before the council right now, where they're asking for $700,000.
So that project, we have gone over, correct, Marlene?
Pardon me?
We have gone over the numbers for this project?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and you're comfortable with the numbers and the analysis?
Good morning, council member. We've been working with Mehmet Neuen and his team for the past several years. There have been some deficiencies in the budget. Last year, we brought forward a grant application for the San Joaquin Valley Air District Pollution Grant, got them an additional 1.8. This is supposed to be the final sort of piece to get the project going. The developer has committed that they're going to start construction in January of 2020. So we have been, you know, working with them closely to get to this point, and, you know, at this point in time, what the developer has submitted has, will continue, has continued to meet the DDA.
Okay, but he just said also, the developer, that he can't assure us that he won't be back, and there won't be other shortfalls.
Let me make that assurance, I won't be back.
I, I would like to point out that I think Mr. Neuen is absolutely correct on construction cost escalation. We've seen that as a city. And we're talking 3% over three years. I'm very confident that construction costs have increased significantly more than that in three years, for the city anyway, our projects.
Okay. I won't be supporting this today.
Member Chavez, followed by Member Arias.
Hey, Mr. Neuen. I'm very familiar with the project. I was here as staff when you initially came. I thought it was a great project, and I think the conversation you hear up here is what a lot of cities are having across the state, that affordable housing is not really affordable. It costs a lot to produce, especially in disadvantaged areas. I know that you were one of the first folks that came to downtown...
I know that you were one of the first folks that came to downtown when really nobody had paid much attention to, to our downtown and so unfamiliar with that, but I had some questions with regards to the construction of the project. So if the council decided to support this, what would be the timeline for, you know, securing the funds to construction to us have an actual affordable and market rate housing options down there?
There's some set dates in the DDNA that I believe that we have to start construction by April of 2020 and we have to complete within sixteen to eighteen months after that. So those, those dates are hard and fast. We're not asking for that to be extended at this point in time. My goal is, I have a birthday in April. I've had a lot of birthdays working on this project, but I'd like to start the project before my birthday in April of 2020.
It's not April first, right?
Oh, no.
April fourth?
April thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth.
And then other, other question I had, are, are you seeing, because I know I've gone through this with a couple of projects in my district, construction costs are, have obviously been going up incrementally. I think on the city side, we see that with our own public works projects. What has been the, the increase that you've seen in the industry for construction costs over the last two, three years?
It's, it's hard to quantify a number on that. I mean, it's, you know, because the economy has been so strong, there's been so much construction that, you know, costs have at least gone up ten to twenty percent. And so every developer that I know, including myself, when you get a project of this magnitude, you have to value engineer it to get it to a point where it's still a good project, but the numbers come to within an acceptable level.
And this is the project that's right where Fulton Street is across from Taoga, right?
Yes, it's, it's the, I call it the northwest corner of Inyo and Fulton, adjacent to the baseball stadium.
Maybe just take out the windows, no windows for the project.
We've, we've looked at every possible scenario.
Call that a jail. All right. Now, I'm going to be supporting this project today, but I, I, that's why I asked the timeline because I think, I think, you know, as we go through what downtown looks like, you know, this is, I see as one of the, the last remaining projects that came in a while back. I think we've done some investments there with, with Fulton Street, with, then we have it. I think, I think what you see from the council is a timeline, okay, we've done our part. We want the private sector now to do their part and, and that's a conversation that, that I think we're going to have pretty soon about downtown on there. So with them, you know, I'll make the motion to support this.
Second.
Member Arias.
Thank you, Council President. I do appreciate the comments from Councilmember Brettafield and I, I really appreciate the fact that we're being extra thoughtful and asking the right questions, the same thing that I did for the last few months. There's been a lot of projects that have continued to be delayed, a lot of DDAs that were promised to be fulfilled and weren't fulfilled. This council will have to take up those failed DDAs fairly soon when people make promises to develop property that the city sold them and never get to development. Just as a reminder, I do appreciate that Bitwise has been building downtown, but Bitwise doesn't build housing. They build commercial and commercial, you just pass that cost on to the private market and you can get the return on your investment that you wish. I, I am hopeful that one day they go into building housing and they'll have to also deal with the reality of prevailing wage of all the standards and requirements that the state requires and imposes on projects, everything from making sure everything is energy efficient to ADA compliant. There's significant barriers to building housing. And lastly, to remind the council that when we're investing in projects, what we want is not to build just a hundred percent affordable projects in any part of town, but to build mixed-income projects. Because at the end of the day, a neighborhood can only be revitalized when there's discretionary income in the neighborhood to attract retail. And when you build just simply projects in the traditional sense of public housing, all you're doing is creating a concentration of poverty in a neighborhood and in a part of town that doesn't bring back the revitalized neighborhoods that people want all across the whole city. So I'm supportive of this project because it does two things. It provides mixed-income housing where folks will be able to have quality housing and it guarantees that affordable housing for a long time. Two, it utilizes required housing funds for a housing project that's affordable. This has no implication and impact to a general fund at all. These are state and local resources that are required to be spent on housing and I challenge anybody to find a housing, affordable housing project that costs seventy thousand dollars a unit. You won't find that because the cost of construction of affordable housing is so expensive in California and ultimately, there's a very clear deadline. And I think the developer, in this case, and every other developer should know that if you don't meet those deadlines, then this council will not be so keen to continue to support projects when people don't meet their deadlines. So with that, I call for the question.
Well, you call for the question all you want, but I'm going to make some comments. First, just a couple of things. Thanks for being here. Good to see you again. What day in April?
April thirteenth.
I'm real, I'm real close to you. We won't compare years of birth because I got you beat, I'm sure.
Not by much.
So I just had a couple of questions. I appreciate all the questions and answers so far, but I'm just curious, how much actual cash has the partnership invested in this project?
To date, we've spent at least four hundred thousand dollars and this goes back to the original RFP that there were multiple properties included, where we did a variety of designs on, on the Gottschalks Building, on the Berkeley Building, on the area south of the stadium. We're now under the DDNA, only we have one project. So we've spread, we've spent a lot of money to get to this point, yes, on other projects, but this project is probably for Teslas.
And the balance of that cash, or the balance of the financing would be through government, basically, at whatever level?
Every dollar that's been spent up to this point has come out of our pocket, including the demolition of the two existing buildings. I don't remember the address, but there were two smaller buildings that we demolished last year.
And is there a future cash investment by the partnership?
There, there has to be.
Any idea?
The number right now is one point six million. That could, that could move up and down.
I was very concerned about the affordable housing issue that faces the entire state of California, but my jurisdiction is here in the city of Fresno and in doing the math here, fifty-four units, I was hoping there would be more affordable housing units than the ten. That would be very, very beneficial to the community, but I understand the business side of the equation as well. With that in mind, I, I did a little bit of math. So the cost per unit is approximately seventy thousand. You're asking for funding at six hundred and fifty-nine thousand. That's sixty-five thousand per unit, so you're in the ballpark of the expense per unit for your development and we're in line with that, with this money from the successor agency. So with that type of math, I think I'll support the project. So the screen is clear, we have a motion and a second. I thought I brought this out to the public, did I not? Yeah, okay. Anyone in the public? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Happy early birthday.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public that wants to address the issue? Please come forward. This is prime time to do that. Seeing none, we'll close it. We have a motion and a second. All those, is there any opposition? Member Brettafield is opposed. Member Arias, Capriolio, and Chavez support the motion. Thank you very much. Sorry, you can't vote on this, ma'am. Well, we've already voted on it, so I'm not sure your comments would change the vote. So you're talking about unscheduled communication? Okay. Let me continue with my calendar. I need to get this done in a timely fashion. So with, with that, we've got the, that member Sparza supported. I'm sorry, I didn't mention your name, sir. Okay, next is the ten forty-five hearing to consider development permit application in Council District Six presented by Planning and Development. Please come forward, give us your name and the info on the project.
Good morning, Council President, Council members. Jared Olson with the Planning and Development Department. There are no changes to the staff reports. However, a presentation has, has been prepared, should you wish to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the public who wants to address this particular item? We're on item ten forty-five, hearing to consider development permits in Council District Six. And no one from the public is coming forward. Any council comments?
I do. Have questions.
Member Arias, yeah, thank you for punching up. Your, your floor is yours.
Can you explain to me a name, Mr. M, what's being proposed? For the public's benefit, explain to us what's being proposed with this item.
Oh, yes. So the, so the, the project is proposing four office buildings of, with a total square footage of approximately thirty-six thousand square feet.
And?
On property, that is zones, um, office, which is a permitted, right, which is a permitted use by right.
By right?
Yes.
Okay. And what's going to be the impact to the neighborhood?
Um, it would be consistent with all of the others. It would be consistent with all of the other surrounding office buildings in the area. So, so there would be increased traffic, which, which would be consistent with, excuse me, with an office building in this area.
Okay. Is there any plans to make traffic improvements or upgrades, given that we're adding four office buildings to that corridor?
Um, there was a traffic impact study done and it found that there were no additional impacts to the, to the surrounding intersections there.
Okay, thank you.
Screen is clear, motion by member, thank you for the presentation. Thank you, sir. Member Brettafield made the motion. Member Chavez seconded the motion. Is there any opposition? Bass is six zero. Thank you very much. General admission, administration, three A is to approve a contract change order, number two, to the construction contract with Garney Construction. This is presented by Public Utilities. Good morning.
Good morning.
It's item three A, page nine.
Council President, Councilmembers, Deam Povich, Department of Public Utilities. The item before you is Contract Change Order Number Two with Garney Construction for the Recycled Water Transmission Main Segment SW1B. This is a final change order to close the, the contract. The project is complete and it has been operational and this change order number two is the result of the mediated settlement that was before this council in the closed session as well as the Oversight Board to approve the settlement and the change order prior to coming to, before you.
Very good, thank you. Anyone in the public who want to address this particular item, please come forward. This is the opportunity. Seeing none, back up to the dais. Motion by Member Chavez. This is in Member Arias's district. No, he's not here. Okay, then we will take the motion by Member Chavez. I'll second it. One question by, oh, I'm sorry, Member Soria and then followed by Member Brettafield.
Just kind of a question and a comment. In this project, can you remind us, did we have a project labor agreement involved with this?
Did we have, I'm sorry?
Did we, was there a project labor agreement involved in the construction of this project?
This, this project is funded by SRF alone and?
But there wasn't, there was no project labor agreement.
There was no separate.
I just wanted to make a point. The thing is that in previous conversations, you know, when, when the issue of project labor agreement comes up, this is not a project labor agreement type of contract and we've come several different times to cover additional costs to, you know, this company. And so I'm just saying, it's, you know, I want to dispute some of those, the rhetoric that happens out there that project labor agreements increase costs. We're seeing that we didn't even do a project labor agreement here and we're constantly having to come back and do change orders. So just wanted to put that for the record so that folks understand that in this project, we had a lot of change orders. Thank you.
Member Brettafield. I have a question for you. So we're increasing a payment of one point three million, is that correct, to this company?
That is correct.
And this project is not completed or it has been completed?
It has been completed. It is operational. Recycled water is being delivered all the way to Rodding Park. The process was long, went through the mediation, contractor filed a claim and as a process through the mediation, this was the settlement amount that was also discussed in closed session in the, in the council.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't recalling. So the city attorney, this was something that we had discussed in council, in the closed session?
Yes, but we shouldn't get into the substance of that, but yes, it was.
Okay. And that would be the same thing with the next item, I imagine?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Member Arias.
Thank you, Council President. What's the total cost of the project?
The, um, let me look at the change order is attached. It is nine point three, four million was the original contract amount. Cumulative change orders, including this one, are one point one, two, which is twelve point one percent of the total contract amount. And the project still came overall under budget even with this increase.
Yeah. Okay, we, you know, we just had a, a conversation about a housing project needing six hundred and sixty thousand dollars of additional city funds for cap financing, for construction cost increase over three, four-year period. In this case, you've increased the allocation of a, you know, eight million dollar project by one point two million just during the construction period. What's the reason for the increased cost?
There were several reasons and I don't know if I can speak about the details because they were discussed in the closed session, but again, it was, the claim was filed by contractor by, in the amount that was about twice as what is now being approved or considered. And through a mediation process, this was the, the amount that mediator proposed and both city and the contractor agreed.
So essentially, you're asking the ratepayers to pay an additional twelve percent for a project that was estimated to be much lower?
Actually, I thought I heard that we're still within our budget. We typically build contingencies into these projects for this very reason and though we've had two change orders, we were still within that budget with contingency. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I, I understand that you're drawing the contingency fund to pay for this, but we awarded a contract to this company for a specific amount. You're asking us to change that contract amount by one point two million?
Yes, in this case, it, without getting into too much detail, I believe it's a, a bit different than the, the previous topic we had on the six hundred and some odd thousand dollars and escalation in, uh, construction costs over time. I think there were some physical changes that, that caused the change order.
I would just like to remind everyone, this was a closed session item, so we're on very thin ice, so let's keep that in mind and I, I think we're pretty much ready to vote on it.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for answering my questions and I just want to remind the council that every council meeting, we pay more than was estimated or what's awarded based on changes in the scope of work and bases on the change, based on the change in construction cost. So to remind us all, this is routine business for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Screen, Mr.
Just one more comment on cost. I, I am not negative on PLAs, but when we start talking about change order costs, those are different than the, the initial cost of the project and, and so we want to make sure we're talking apples to apples.
Thank you very much. We have a motion by Member Chavez. I'll second it. Is there any opposition?
No.
So we have one, two, three, four, yeses and two nos. Nos being Members Brettafield and Arias. Thank you. Item three B, approve a contract change number nine. This is in District Item three B, approve a contract change number nine, this is in District Five and Public Utilities again? Okay, I have a motion to approve by member Chavez, I'll second it. Is there any, uh, one in the public wish to address this? Seeing none, back to the dais, I can't tell if, no, screen is clear, we have a motion and second, is there any opposition?
No.
Two nos, members Arias and Brettafield, thank you. Uh, item, item passes, three C, actions pertaining to the HUD that has HUD programs, this is planning and development. Good morning, Director.
Good morning, Councilmember, um, Jennifer Clark, Director of Planning and Development, and this morning, we are, um, hearing the, uh, a continued item from last, uh, council meeting regarding the extension of two contracts, um, for our HUD consulting firms who provide, um, administrative auditing, um, and oversight of our, uh, emergency solutions grant, our, um, TBRA and our HOPA programs with Michael Baker for an additional 113,000 dollars for the second year of service, um, and with USONA Development Corp., uh, LLC for our CDBG programs for an additional 304, 510 dollars for the second year of service, um, and if you have additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for that presentation, anyone in the public wish to address this? Come forward. Seeing none to the dais, and I'm member Brettafield. Yeah, Jennifer, so... You're next. Um, I understand you're feeling the need for these consultants, but are you doing anything to have staff who can do this work in the future, so we don't have to keep paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to these consultants?
Absolutely, that's a really great question, so, for our homeless services, um, we've actually advertised a position, um, we believe over the next three to four months, we'll be able to recruit and, um, onboard a new employee, um, who would then work under the oversight of our Michael Baker contract to ensure that they are up to speed, we've really seen, um, a huge improvement in the program over the last year, in our file compliance, um, in our ability to meet our federal HUD regulations, bring all of our, um, funding drawdowns up to current year, um, those are really critical pieces in HUD's mind on that side, um, and then on our CDBG programs, we're still working with our regional office, we believe, um, that we need, um, one to two more years before we'll be fully operational, but over that time period, we anticipate starting to bring on staff, um, to work with our consultant to, to, um, come into compliance and to ensure that in the future, we can be self-sustaining.
Great, I'll support it today, I just, you know, obviously want, want to see that we can mitigate the use of consultants for hundreds of thousands of dollars, and you added all, it's millions of dollars in the city, thank you. Member Arias.
Thank you, Jennifer and the mayor and Tim for meeting with the council members, um, last week, um, I still have reservations on this contract as written, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracts with an amendment, to specifically state that there will be no extensions of the terms of the agreements without council approval. So in essence, we're gonna approve a one-year contract for these two items.
I appreciate that motion, uh, Jennifer, does that create a problem with the regional office to tack on an amendment like that, it does not, okay, thank you, I needed to know that before. So we have a motion by member Arias, seconded by member Chavez, is there any opposition with the amendment? We have a new screen system up here, and it's making it really rough, so, member Soria, sorry about that.
Thank you, Council President, just a, maybe one question, um, to Jennifer and maybe to the city manager, just kind of wanted to get your sense about where the mayor is at, um, when it comes to filling these positions, because what I expressed to you guys in the meeting was that I've been very frustrated, because what you guys have represented to this council is that, yes, we just need temporary consultants, we're gonna fill these positions, but we haven't, in my opinion, we haven't made our best efforts to do so, um, and I felt that we were being told one thing, but in reality, the goal was to just use the consultants as, um, kind of supplanting the staff that could perform this work for the long haul. I want to know where is the mayor, is he truly committed to filling these positions, or will this council in one year have to, again, revisit the same issue, so is one year sufficient for, for staff, and I really want to know where the mayor is at when it comes to filling these positions, or does he think that it's more valuable to have a consultant, because it's a policy decision, and this is what I told everyone in that meeting, it's a policy call, and I am concerned, because I believe that, you know, previous councils, you know, we have a couple new members, but previous councils have been represented, that we were gonna, at some point, fill these positions, yet we have not, so what is, what is, for the long term, the long haul, because it is gonna be a policy call, I don't want to see, um, more consultants filling some of these positions that could be permanent positions, I understand that we need consultants when we don't have the expertise, I, I get that, I'm not opposed to hiring consultants when it is needed, but I really want to know where the administration is at on this issue.
Well, I do believe the administration has committed to at least one person, per Jennifer, the recruitment is being, is it out yet?
Yes.
And then the other two, we're, we're expecting it will take more time to get that one under control?
So, um, councilmember, we feel very strongly that we have, um, capacity within, um, the city of Fresno, within our organizations that we work with, to be able to hire someone on our, um, emergency solutions grant, our, um, HOPA programs and our TBRA, so our homeless portfolio, we really feel like we can have that, um, hired by the end of the year and, um, be, um, out of that particular consulting contract, um, by the end of the, of the fiscal year, um, I have committed to, um, start identifying the correct, um, job specifications and the correct types of personnel for CDBG, um, we're still rebuilding a relationship that, um, quite frankly, was eroded, um, for many, many years prior to, um, us, you know, trying to, to correct the situation, so, we believe that, um, we can begin that hiring process in the spring, um, how long it takes to hire people, I don't know that I can commit to that, but I think with this, um, uh, additional, um, approval by the council for any kind of extension and, and having to come back for any kind of change, will allow us to come back if we are having trouble, and explain what that trouble is before we ask for an additional extension, at this point, we feel that, um, we need, um, the current one year for Michael Baker, as we've just talked about, um, one to two years for USONA, for our CDBG consulting, um, and after that, we really feel pretty strongly that we can be self-sufficient.
One to two years, so, what about the fact that this council just said one year?
This, we would have to come back.
The intent would be to bring those people onboard, and, um, based on what I have seen, there's probably not somebody that we can find easily that is trained in, in the discipline, so, uh, the consultants would be used in part to train those people, is that correct?
Correct.
And councilmember Chavez brought up last time, um, and I think you also brought up the issue of the salaries and the competitiveness, so where are we at with the, that analysis, have you guys thought about what we were gonna do to, because if we're in the same space, you know, ten months from now, I'm gonna be very angry, because I feel like this is like a...
The position that we are advertising, um, as a senior management analyst, the range is seventy-five to ninety thousand dollars a year, similar work in other jurisdictions in the state of California goes for sixty-five to eighty thousand dollars a year, so, we're, we're at a much higher range than similar, similar cities.
Just for that position, what about the other positions?
Similar position, um, so we're, the, the other positions, we would have to evaluate as we determine, in sitting down with the committee, what are the goals for next year's consolidated plan, so that we can start to determine what kinds of positions, again, if we're gonna self-perform, a lot of homeowner rehab, um, we're going to need rehab specialists, we're going to need, um, building inspectors, which is a different skill set than a management analyst, so, that, um, determination, we would need to look at this fall, and then we need to work with personnel to, to identify comparable positions and salaries.
Okay, so, I have extreme reservations in giving the extension, but this is like for me, the last, I've been, I feel like a broken record every single year, um, I hope that you guys are really serious about filling those positions, and that we move expeditiously with the council to try to figure out those priorities, so that we're not ten months out, and we're trying to figure out what those priorities are, and then we're like, oh, well, we need one more year, because we didn't set the priorities early on, so, if we could have a committee meeting sooner than later with you guys, that would be great.
We are looking forward to making those decisions with the committee.
We have a motion by member Arias, seconded by member Chavez, is there any opposition? Passes six zero, item four B, a bill for introduction, adding a section to the Fresno meeting code, sponsored by members Arias and Ms. Sparza.
Thank you, Council President, I try and keep this short and brief, um, just to give the council some background, there are, have been some clear procedures and policy in place for surplus property that the city has to follow when disposing of any surplus property, the, most of the property that we dispose of tends to be underutilized property that the city owns, um, and that is, there is no written procedures for how the city disposes of underutilized property, for example, a parking lot next door could be determined underutilized, because, um, if somebody wants to build a hotel, there could be additional revenue generated, um, versus a parking lot, um, use, so, we worked with, uh, legal counsel for the last few months to develop a policy that does that, um, we did know that there's others that have, um, tried this, um, and have been working through it, so I want to give you a quick overview of what the policy looks like, in essence, we try to achieve three things, more public transparency, um, secondly, um, a good neighbor, um, to anyone who owns property adjacent to the city-owned property, and then lastly, to be good stewards of the public assets as we consider, um, disposing of them, so the process, the policy that we are proposing would establish, um, the city manager would establish a committee of city staff and members of the public at her discretion to develop an RFP, uh, for the property, the RFP would then be, um, advertised in the local newspaper, on the city website, the neighbors, this goes to the good neighbor policy, uh, the neighbors within a thousand feet would all be notified that the city is considering selling the property that's owned by the city, so that neighbors have an opportunity to either make a bid for the property, or to at least provide, um, input or awareness to what the future use of that property may be, um, then the committee, um, established by the city manager, would evaluate the best value for that city property, they would consider things like price, community benefit, uh, the record of the, um, applicant to achieve what's being proposed, the qualifications, the tax, um, value to the city of Fresno, and any other legal factors that the council, um, identifies, um, that recommendation would then come to the city council, um, with the goal of making sure that, um, the best value, uh, for the taxpayers is achieved, um, so again, this, um, prop, um, this policy sets, um, very clear guidelines for any disposal of real estate that the city owns, um, our goal again is to ensure public transparency, that the neighbors next to our city-owned, um, assets are aware of it, that the general public, and that everybody has an opportunity to make a bid and propose a use for that land, and, um, that we also get the best value for that property, um, and best value sometimes isn't just price, but it could be use, could be, um, uh, merit of things, so that's, in short, is our proposal to establish a policy for the disposition of, uh, city real estate.
Member Sparza.
Yes, thank you, Council President, uh, so this policy is really just, again, a straightforward measure that's going to increase, uh, transparency for, uh, these property deals that are, are made, uh, helping sure that we're maximizing the use of, uh, these sites in a way that yields the most benefit for our communities, uh, I think ultimately, what, what this policy does will, uh, remove the incentive for, uh, folks who want to, uh, bid on these properties, uh, right now, we have, there's a process, kind of an informal process, where, um, a, some, a prospective buyer can, uh, put in an unsolicited bid, and I think that opens up, uh, kind of a slippery slope for some of these backroom deals, uh, and so I think this, this policy will, uh, prevent that further and just make it, uh, sort of a wide-open, uh, community, uh, process.
Is that a motion?
Motion, yeah, second.
Motion by member...
Or was I, I'll make the motion.
Motion by member Sparza, seconded by member Arias, is there any opposition? Passes six zero, thank you very much, four C, okay, member Soria. Okay, go to four C, a resolution in support of the county's sale of the former UMC site for development of affordable housing, member Chavez has a conflict, so he'll step out of the chamber.
Yep, I live very close by there, so.
Thank you, and this is a presentation by councilmember Sparza.
Yes, thank you, Council President, uh, so, the, uh, the county of Fresno is considering selling the UMC campus, uh, there to, uh, CMG Construction, and, uh, the prospective project is going to be, uh, mixed-use project, it'll consist of senior housing and affordable housing, uh, and the city has not yet formally been involved, uh, up until now, I hope it will support this, uh, resolution, uh, the city's role, initial role is going to be, uh, oversight of the affordable housing covenants, and I, we, we, I've worked with legal counsel, uh, as well as with, uh, county of Fresno, supervisor, South Candelario's office, uh, to facilitate, uh, you know, kind of what that would look like, uh, as well as the county of Fresno's, uh, council, uh, and so, this is sort of the first step, and, uh, taking what I believe, uh, can be a great community asset, uh, and transforming it, uh, especially adding to the, uh, the housing stock, uh, here in Fresno, on the senior housing and the affordable housing, so, ask my colleagues to support this, is, was one initial step, um, and, uh, going forward, the developer is going to be in touch with, uh, planning and, uh, as this project becomes, uh, comes to fruition.
Motion attached to that?
Motion approved.
I'll second it, uh, screen is clear, anyone in the public wish to address this item, please come forward, your name and address will help us, and you have three minutes, seeing none, uh, is the screen is clear, any opposition? Passes five zero, member, uh, Chavez absent due to conflict. I think that's it, except for the 145 workshop, if, other than that, we have closed session, so, with that, I think someone wanted to speak on unscheduled, you can come forward if you wish, and, and give us your opinion on whatever item you wish.
Miss, you can come up and address the council.
Come up, if you'll...
The mic, please.
Excuse me, your vice president, if you'll come, uh, forward, and then lower the mic to your level, lower the mic so you can speak into it.
Okay.
Right, and then give us your name and address, and then you have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Cynthia Leon, and I'm ambassador of Christ Jesus, and, um, I'm just having, um, a problem trying to resolve the issues that I'm going through, and I just, um, trying to get the correct help that I need to take action on what's going on with me where I'm at, and the address where I'm staying at, I'm homeless, and I'm staying at the Praveralo House, but it's just been tragedy from tragedy. And I'm just trying to get help, you know, because I've been homeless for a year, and they're abusing me at the Praveralo House, and Naomi's home, and now I'm at the missions, and the staff is harassing me, and the clients, and I get thrown out in the street, have no family to help me, and now I'm staying at the missions, and, and it's just, um, history repeating itself from one tragedy to the other, and, and I bring it to their attention, and they don't do anything about it. And I bring it to their attention, and they don't do anything about it. I report the police this morning because I've been sleeping in the, at the missions and the office with other women, and there's different walks of life, and God sends me everywhere, but it's been danger. They're putting me in harm's danger, and they're not doing anything to fix it, to get me housing, and it's been a whole year already. And they just said, wait, wait, and I'm doing, going to work and taking care of what I need to take care of and keep, want to be in a safe shelter, and it hasn't been safe at all. And I don't know what, what they're, why they're not doing anything about it, doing anything, anything. I've addressed it to the police officer because I woke up this morning and they sent me in the chapel, and the man from the program are in there watching the people, but I don't understand if they're danger to, to us, people going in there, why they would have them people in there, first of all. And I woke up with my cut told, and I was in my car. I woke up and went to my car reading my Bible and stuff, and it just, like a itch, and I looked and my right toe was cut, so I went in there to address it to them. And they just said, well, the staffs just said, why don't you just go to the Marjorie Mason Center, you know, like, I go, you guys have to refer me over there. I want to be in a safe place, a safe environment, and I'm doing everything to keep a shelter over my head so I don't have to sleep in the, in a car, and where it's hot, and it's just been ongoing from one tragedy to another tragedy, you know? The last time I was homeless, I shouldn't be homeless because I paid my rent. I had all, everything, all my proof every time I went to court. I had all the evidence. I'm the evidence because I bear the scars and body on my, I bear the scars and marks on my body for the sake of my Christ Jesus and laying my life down because I'm in danger, and this keeps repeating itself. It's like history repeating itself, and I made complaint forms to them, and, you know, the staff has pushed me and assaulted me, and the clients have threatened my life like the other homeless ladies there. And I've done everything I can, but I'm saying I've addressed it here in this office and made complaints with the county, and then the county said, come to the city. So I don't know what destination that, that property, what...
I think we have the issue presented, and I don't know who or what to talk to. Do you guys have any ideas?
But now that...
We have a fellow named H. Spees, and he is out the door to your left. If you go in the reception area and ask for an appointment or to see him if he's still here.
To see who?
H., last name S.P.E.E.S. H. is the first name.
And so I've handled that, and I took it to the director's there, and one director got fired from the...
But he'll, we understand the issue. I'm trying to give you a resolution.
Okay.
So if you'll talk to H., he might be able to help you resolve it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And it's an honor to be standing in front of you. I just like, God directed me, and I was going to come, that's where I was going to go. And then I just opened the door to see if the door was open because I wanted to talk to you because I need...
We're happy to be part of your journey, but I have to move on to the next item.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, yes, sir?
I want to talk more to the council speaker and the public get a chance after this lady, but I don't think that was your procedure.
All right, come on, come on up, sir. And if you'll give, we, it's called unscheduled communication usually, and that's when you have the opportunity to speak. We did that earlier, but we're going to make an exception for you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And we'll open that up, and if you'll give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Albert Smith.
Pull that a little closer to your voice.
Albert Smith. I'm with ANS Grading. We do weed abatement and public nuisance for the city of Fresno currently. It was brought to my attention this morning, and my daughter looked on the, on the computer, and she found that they were trying to make the award completely to Sequoia Western. We're a little concerned about that. We've been doing business with the city for 19 years now. Throughout this 19 years, they've consistently tried to get rid of us. They have gotten rid of all the other minority contractors. We're the only ones left. We feel like this is just another pull that we've had to go through. We had problems initially because Sequoia, Sequoia Western was getting most of the work, and they weren't dividing it. We had, we had meetings upon meetings. We decide, we decided we would go on a numbering system. Sequoia would get one, we would get one. We discovered that even with that system, they found a way to award him the bigger job, so we came up with like $100,000 less earnings per year or so because he was getting the big job. Somehow those numbers just worked out where we always got less. The last meeting I had with the city of Fresno, code enforcement, I said, look, I want to see how Sequoia Western is getting their work and how we're getting our work for weed abatement. They promised me they'd get it to, to me, they didn't do it. I met again, they promised again, they didn't do it. This time, when they opened this up, when they opened this up, they didn't notify us that they were opening it up, and we've been asking, and they didn't tell me that there was a council meeting today that they were trying to award this to one contractor specifically. We're saying that this is just another attempt to get rid of a minority contractor. We've been through this consistently for 19 years, being, how shall I say?
Left out.
Not equally treated.
Left out. Well, listen, the item was on the agenda originally, and it was continued, and I don't know to what date.
Okay.
See, we have any idea?
Council President, the matter was continued next week. Our office distributed a memo about 15 minutes ago by email to the council members on this very subject, and we'll be meeting with the council code enforcement committee between now and next week to discuss it also.
Okay, so it'll be on next week's agenda or...
Right now, it's on next week's agenda.
So next week's agenda.
I just want you to know, they've gotten rid of every other minority contractor. They've been trying to get rid of us for 19 years. Not 19, because the first, first guy that was in charge, he was fair. After that, things went kind of, and they, from them saying we didn't have the proper equipment to everything, we said, we've got everything.
Well, we'll have that topic next week, and you're welcome to come back and bring colleagues if you wish and address that item, what we call it.
Probably what I'll come back with, and I don't know how I could do this, but I'll bring back, I'll come back with some of the statements that show the difference in the wages for particular years that they've, that we've gotten and they've gotten.
Okay, thank you.
We'd appreciate that. That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. I know I'm on schedule.
No worries. We're here to serve.
But it's next week, huh?
Yes. Starts at nine o'clock, but you have to look at the agenda to see when the item is timed or when it's going to be on the document. So you don't sit here all day.
When do they post the agendas?
It'll be this Friday with our clerk's office, and I think we're online as well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much indeed, I appreciate it.
You got it, thank you. Thanks for being here. So then, that leaves the closed session announcement. Does any member of the public wish to comment on any closed session item? Seeing none. City attorney, would you please announce the closed session? I think we have a 1:45. We can come back for closed session at 1:15 if you'd like, 1:30? Okay, so we'll come back at 1:30?
So council will be going directly into closed session at 1:30?
Yes.
Yes, in closed session, we have the Measel versus the city of Fresno, also Myrieta Golding versus city of Fresno, labor negotiations concerning listed bargaining units, also a discussion of city hall security, and conference with real property negotiator concerning the listed property.
We'll resume our meeting today of August 15th, and again, I apologize. Thank you for your patience. We had some really time-sensitive issues in closed session that we had to address. We're trying to work on that time-sensitive aspect, but it gets very difficult. So thank you again for your patience, and member Sparza, I think you had this calendar for today.
Did I? Fantastic.
Did you say did I or did I?
Ditto. Nothing.
I thought you did. Maybe, maybe I'm mistaken.
It was Miguel.
I'm sorry.
I think the council president's mixing up his Mexicans today.
It was, that doesn't include my wife, right?
It does.
Wife, my wife, trust me.
Council President, you need your glasses.
This is sponsored by Vice President Arias and Council Member Extraordinaire Sparza.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. I'd like to quickly turn this over to our presenters this afternoon. As some of you may know, the group of community leaders have been involved in the DRIVE initiative that seeks to establish a strategic economic development initiative for the city of Fresno. Some of us have attended some of the group meetings, others have been a little more involved, so we wanted to make sure we gave the group an opportunity to present to the council and for the council to indicate any interest that they may have in participating in the process. So with that, we'll turn it over to the presenters.
I think I remember, oh, it's on. I vaguely remember how this works. Oh, and right there, thanks. All right, well, good afternoon, Council President, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, Madam City Clerk, Mr. City Attorney. It's very nice to see all of you. Thanks for the opportunity to stop by and update you on a lot of incredible work that's happening in our community and our greater Fresno region over the summer in preparation for the November Economic Summit that is coming very quickly. My job here today is to be succinct, which many of you, we've worked together, and you know how hard it is for me, but I've been practicing. So here we go. And I know mostly we want to just touch on a few things with you all and then leave time for any questions and comments you may have. I'm Ashley Swerengen with the Central Valley Community Foundation. Joining me today from the DRIVE Executive Committee, which is a wonderful team of volunteers, is Lenisha Senegal, Heather Brown from Fresno County EOC, Dr. Alan Perro, Board Chair of the Community Foundation, Michelle Cantwell-Kofer from Fresno County Superintendent of Schools, Sherry Wiedenhoffer from Fresno Pacific and the Center for Peacemaking, and Merrick Gutman, I believe, is back, yes, he is, from Brookings Institution, who's been one of our really important research partners in this process. We wanted to do for you today is just give you a very high level of the baseline research that has gone into the strategy behind the initiatives that are emerging from this process. That includes a 10-year aspirational vision. We'll give you a very high level of the portfolio of initiatives that are being developed today by our volunteers, and then just touch in on process, where we are in the process. We'll stop with that, and then we'll turn it back to you all for your comments and questions. So with that, it's my pleasure to introduce Merrick Gutman from the Brookings Institution, who will kick us off with some of the research.
Thank you all very much. I'm happy to take questions about research content or have any conversations after the presentation, or if you choose to interrupt me, I'm fine with that as well.
I love that jacket. Where did you get it? Seriously, that's...
I got it when it was passing through New York City. I can share that information with you later. So the, is this working? Okay. So this has been a very intensive process, been engaging with colleagues from McKinsey, from Jobs for the Future, from the Urban Institute, to work through a rapid pace, a lot of evidence, a lot of data and analysis, some of which is not surprising because you all have seen circumstances and researched on before, but an aggregation across a lot of different topical areas for application into objective strategies and tactics. So there is still more going on, and there will be more after the November summit as a target deadline for releasing information and a framework. But all of this has been about collecting information, data, examples from across the country and internationally, and how it could apply more effectively here in Fresno. Our orientation has been around creating economic opportunity and mobility, and you'll see, if you jumped ahead to slide 14, sort of a statement of values that others will speak to in how to organize that. But a core aspect has been our focus on the way the economy works in this region and who it works for. So this represents information that you're already aware of, how Fresno is positioned or its challenges relative to other places in California, and it's emblematic of how Fresno is positioned versus other places in the country. But we're looking at three dimensions of making the economy work effectively. One is simply growth. The second is productivity or prosperity, and the third is inclusion. You can have growth without inclusion, but you cannot have inclusion without growth. So it's very, very important that we look at this in an integrated way of how we make the economy work better in all of these categories for people who live here. With that orientation, we've structured the analysis and the types of interventions in three categories. One is economic development, but it's got to be economic development connected to people and to place. The second is talent or human capital, and that is an input, first of all, who are we trying to benefit through economic, better economic performance, but also that's a driver for more successful economic performance and vibrant neighborhoods. And then the final one is about connecting up neighborhoods and improving those status, but also thinking about how neighborhoods relate to the regional economy. So this is an integrated approach, and we've tried to categorize it by key drivers of competitiveness and success when measuring whether the economy is working in an inclusive way. You'll see, again, when you get further on, that's how we organize the vision statements and then the kind of research and analytics for the initiatives that are being proposed and developed in a variety of work groups. To this point, this is... To this point, these are the challenges that we're facing. Again, I don't think that these are surprising metrics for you all when we're talking about the performance and what it results in for the economy, for people who live here. But categorize one, which I'll really emphasize, around economic development and the traded sectors or what's exportable. And by exportable, we mean traded goods and services outside of the economic region. So, it could be to Los Angeles, it could be to San Francisco, or it could be to Brazil. But it's what we do that's not locally serving. The number of people who are struggling to make ends meet in this region because of the quality of jobs being created, so thinking about those elements of traded sectors and job quality. And then the other inputs of how are we producing the adequate pipeline of people and talent so that they can take advantage of economic opportunities and achieve mobility? And the geographic, the geographic nature of how the economy works and who it works for. So, again, these are some of the elements. There's to be a very specific orientation, and we've done analysis on how this is working for different components, different areas within the city and in the region, and explicitly by race and gender as well. This is a really complicated-looking analysis, but is probably the most critical when we're just thinking about economic development inputs and what's driving or failing to drive the Fresno economy in a way that's going to be inclusive and create the kinds of opportunities that we need. If you look at this list, the places or the sectors that are highlighted in blue are the ones that are traded or exportable. And then you look at the areas of specializations, whether we're good or not in those compared to the rest of the country, and the kinds of wages that they produce. This is the highest level of analysis we did. We also broke down into each of these categories, I'll mention briefly in the next slide, the kinds of occupations and whether these are opportunity jobs and leading into good middle-scale, middle-income, uh, weight, uh, middle-scale, middle-income generating activities. But you see agriculture, not surprisingly, again, the dominant employment and specialization in this region. But the quality of those jobs that's being generated and how do we use that sector to move up the value chain and create better-quality jobs is really critical. We've uncovered a lot of information about the lack of innovation here around a core driver of the economy. And so, you'll see some of the tactics trying to respond to that. Basically, you see, we need more blues up there and we need more blues in a higher-value component. And there are ways that you can look at, again, examples in the United States and internationally to get there, but the focus has to be on those traded-sector opportunities. A key challenge has been that we see lots of growth in terms of job creation in, say, the healthcare sector. And people tend to perceive that and perceive that's a good thing, we're creating jobs in healthcare. But if you look at the quality of those jobs and that they're all locally serving, not bringing new resources into the community, but are following along population growth and health trends, that is not an area where we say it's a success because there are more jobs here. All right? Now, again, I want to talk about the quality of these jobs because that's the most important factor when we're kind of prioritize where economic development and workforce development can work better together. Reiterating the relatively low proportion of jobs that are in these traded or exportable sectors versus other places, that puts us behind in terms of quality job creation. And then the analysis that we've done, this is in the aggregate, but done by various industry sectors and occupations, about the distribution of these jobs in this region. So, a good job is one that has a self-sufficiency wage, that has as a proxy for other benefits, healthcare provided in it, and that is non-seasonal. A promising job is categorized as one that misses one element, or maybe two even, of that good job, but within 10 years, following occupational trends and career shifts, will most likely get you into a good job. And then you have high-skill jobs that are, have all the characteristics of a good job but require a four-year degree or higher. And then you have, euphemistically, other jobs. Now, the other jobs is not surprising. Lots of regions around the country have around the 50% mark in other jobs. What's missing here is, number one, too few jobs overall, and, number two, that there tends to be, to be better to have more actually of those high-skill jobs alongside those middle-scale, middle-income jobs. This region has a relatively low proportion of high-skill jobs. So, when we're thinking about inclusion, to drive inclusion, we have to have a balanced approach that addresses the job creation for middle-scale, middle-income, but because the region's economy is out of sync in terms of creating those kinds of opportunities, in part it's because we also don't have enough of those high-skill jobs that help to drive the locally-serving economy and the creation of middle-scale, middle-income jobs. So, this is an unusual circumstance that's different from other places where we've looked at this and worked on trying to find solutions. I just want to point that out because people will, may say, "Well, why are you focused on more high-skill jobs alongside these accessible jobs for people who are struggling"? It's just important to recognize that there are two pieces of this puzzle that have to be addressed to solve the whole, solve the whole situation. And I'll conclude this part of the evidence with just an emphasis, again, on the issues of race and gender. And we have to look at this, not just from the creation of jobs, number one, and the quality of jobs that we are oriented and investing in. And there are various, again, tactics to address that challenge, but also who's able to access those jobs and make sure that we, when we're making improvements in the core aspects of the economy, that we are also being very attentive to the disparity in systems and outreach that brings diversity into those opportunities. So, we just highlight a couple of points about different performance based on race here and acknowledge that that is an explicit element of this. The business, community, and economic development interests typically are not thinking about inclusion and the benefits of competitiveness to them. And we have specific examples, research, and evidence from across the country that says that's, that demonstrates why that's the wrong approach. Firms and places that are more inclusive, more economically mobile, tapping the full range of talent that's available in the region, do better. So, this is as much a case about social or moral obligations as an economic case and a business case. So, we have to make very clear the two parts of that so that all the stakeholders of the region recognize that inclusive economic development is beneficial for everybody and everyone has a stake. I think that I'll turn it over now toward the other sections on human capital and neighborhood development. Thanks.
Good afternoon. Michelle Kofer with Fresno County Superintendent of Schools and is a longtime public school educator. I'm so pleased to be able to say that this plan is inclusive of what will really drive the work, and that is the human capital work that we need to put together as well. So, these next few slides really highlight the human capital work as well as the recognition of how important it is to shore up and make strong and healthy our neighborhoods as well. So, with regard to the human capital, we recognize, as was shared earlier, that life experiences differ significantly for Fresnoans based on race. And you are looking at preterm birth rate and children living below the poverty level, which are two significant indicators of disparity in our community, even more so in our community than maybe across other communities, as well as educational outcomes that we track and measure regularly. It's important to recognize that in each of these areas, our children and our families of color fare worse than their peers. Also of importance to recognize within the theme of human capital is that nearly 45,000 Fresnoans are unemployed. Addressing this challenge will require both short-term and long-term solutions across the talent pipeline, and we're recognizing that, again, it's the people in our community, the people that are living in our community currently and the people that will be attracted to work and live in our community in the future that will drive the important work with regard to the economic development. Recognizing at this time that 45,000 of our potential workers, if you will, are unemployed is significant, and then recognizing the pipeline that leads to such an indicator is significant as well. In schools, we've been looking at benchmarks, if you will, that we need to measure to recognize along the cradle to curriculum continuum, where are we losing our students and are they falling off track so that they're not graduating and they're not becoming productive members of our community? We've been measuring that for quite some time. It's just particularly important to recognize that within this comprehensive plan, we're recognizing the importance of the continuum of the development of the human capital. With regard to neighborhood development, opportunity, as has been said before, opportunity in Fresno is concentrated in outward and less diverse neighborhoods. And again, you'll see disparity with regard to opportunity for our non-whites in Fresno. Again, recognizing that zip code matters. Low-income neighborhoods in the southern part of Fresno are disproportionately impacted by toxic release as an example of the types of disparities that should not be the case with regard to, again, shoring up and strengthening and making stable and making healthy our neighborhoods. We recognize that there are three aspects to this plan: economic development, human capital, and neighborhood development, and that working in concert is, as Merrick said, both prudent as well as moral and socially responsible work.
So, as you can tell, and we could literally have another 500 slides up here, just given the depth of research that we've been able to access with McKinsey, Brookings, Urban Institute, Jobs for the Future, Central Valley Health Policy Institute, it's really important to us to start with a solid research base. And then also to recognize that we approach the development of this investment plan or this portfolio of investable opportunities, we're not at square one by any stretch of the imagination. And I think it's important to acknowledge, there's been a lot of good work in our community over the last 20 years that has gotten us to this point, and if we don't pivot and figure out how to capitalize on those things and actually put money where we need to see it flow, investment where it needs to happen, shovels in the ground, new processes, new programs that can be proven to be effective, we'll have lost out on the momentum from the last 20 years. Think of it this way, 20 years in to a 40-year fix. The things that are listed in green, I would, and probably the list could be much longer, but we have seen a slight increase in exports and jobs. We've seen some momentum in downtown, for example. There have been very substantial local and state policy wins and some extremely important policies that got enacted just this last year were championed by community groups from Fresno who are leading statewide policy efforts that are going to benefit residents of this community. So, our community has developed some chops. We've developed some muscle around change that now I think we've got to think about channeling into this next couple of decades of work. We've seen significant investment, that we have worked hard to get to the table, whether it's TCC or BRT or the water infrastructure that you all fought, and, well, never mind. I'll spare like the story. I remember when! And I'm looking at Council Member Soria because she was the one who, like, that was a critical moment for her to come into this chamber and say, "We've got to invest in drought-proofing our city." And like, I mean, those are all really significant wins. And then topping that off, you know, the governor's focus on inland California, which is something that maybe none of us could have predicted, and sparing the political debate on any other issue, but it's important that the governor is saying it is time for inland California and Central Valley in particular to get its fair share. And so, those things we have working with us, that is the wind at our backs. The truth of the matter is that we have wind in our face, like, almost like no other city in the United States. For, I mean, we glossed over the data that just got presented, but you could literally stop and just get lost in any one of those many data points and think about the incredible disparity we're experiencing. The fact the economy is distressed, the 55th worst out of 59 major cities in California for overall economic growth, but 59 out of 59 for economic inclusion and racial disparity. Like, it's really hard for me to even say those words. We have significant work to do. So, depending on how you look at it, we celebrate getting to this point, but we have to use that momentum to say, "Okay, we're not going to spend another 20 years just spinning in the same stuff. We have to find a way to really advance the ball because, to me, this is our moment." These are some of the critical pillars, if you will, of the DRIVE initiative. And the one thing that I want to point out on this slide, different from past attempts, this is an investment portfolio. This is not a policy document per se, although clearly there will be policy changes that will be needed, that we'll have to highlight in our final investment plan, that there are enabling pieces, legislation, et cetera, that are going to be required to invest as we're calling for. But it's different for us in Fresno to think about, how do you spend a dollar? I learned a lot in this building about the difficulty in attracting a new dollar and then actually spending it and then getting results from spending that dollar. It's a lot of work. So, when we heard all the time, you know, government grants were available for communities that were, quote, "shovel-ready," how many times do you hear that in any given day in this building? Countless times. What we're attempting to do is not just from a government infrastructure perspective, but from a civic, you know, community-wide perspective, how do we get ourselves shovel-ready and prove to investors, whether they be public, whether they be philanthropic, whether they be impact investors, or ultimately, if we orchestrate things the right way, pure, private, for-profit investors? How do we prove to them that we've done our work, we've teed up specific opportunities, and we can demonstrate results should the resources be available to invest? So, just a couple more things we want to touch on, and then we'll turn it back to you all. Lenisha Senegal is going to come up and, a few more slides to go through, and then our Board Chair will conclude and hand it back to the dais. Thanks.
Thank you. So, I've had the great opportunity of joining the DRIVE initiative most recently, and myself along with some of the residents and individuals and businesses that I have the opportunity to serve alongside. This work has given us immense hope that through the vision, that it will be able to realize a great vision for our community. So, when I think about the opportunities that it affords to the residents from the inclusive standpoint, from, you know, creating the economic and sustainable mobility opportunities, you know, this is through one of those ways that we're able to accomplish those goals. So, with the DRIVE initiative, it is a bold initiative, a 10-year aspiration. Some of the measurable outcomes include increasing the number of good and promising job opportunities. You know what? I didn't put it on the, on the next slide. Oh, did I just turn the whole slide? There we go. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. So, creating some, you know, good and promising jobs across all educational levels, which was really a great opportunity for us to even have the discussions on reducing the racial and ethnic disparities that prevent us from, you know, really being able to access these opportunities. Entrepreneurship is a key driver for a lot of residents who may not have realized that is a pathway to climbing out of poverty. And so, that too is a big conversation. And some of the other measurables to include, you know, early wins in our childhood development outcomes, you know, growing and building up on our third-grade reading level impact, our upskilling, you know, our residents that, you know, may not have the skills to be able to, you know, to be able to even qualify for some of the jobs that are still, you know, open today. And then just overall neighborhood improvement, making sure that, you know, the affordability of our housing market and, you know, other pathways through environmental justice and sustainability. So, we have a lot of great detail to these initiatives that are also added on the website. So, if there's any that stick out to you that you would like to learn more information about, there's, that opportunity is there. So, just, you know, we welcome the involvement in these spaces. But I think what I'm really proud about is that this work was, has gained the input from over 250 work group members who are all aligned to, you know, to find ways that we can take on the challenge of executing these big initiatives. So, in the economic development portfolio, when we think about, you know, what would Fresno be recognized for when we think about a research and development city? What would that look like? When we think about creating a space where we welcome big businesses to be able to have the infrastructure to locate here in our city and to continue, you know, what they do. do best to create jobs? When we think about the investment to support small and minority-owned businesses and really creating a pathway for them to be able to access contracts and opportunities through that way? When I think about the human capital, you know, there's so much work around that, in that space. But our residents, they, I'm really proud how resilient a lot of us are when we think about, you know, these types of opportunities. How do we align with, you know, when we, how do we align around this work to expand our teacher workforce? How do we align around our young people who, you know, need the jobs? How do we align around our young babies who need the, you know, that first five years of investment so that they too can, you know, be able to expand their greater years? And then the other initiatives to include neighborhood wealth creation for communities of color, again, downtown revitalization, civic infrastructure, as well as permanent affordable housing. So, as I mentioned before, we are, you know, over 250 work group members. We're almost halfway through the sprint, so we have about two more weeks to go for the, to be able to have a near-final draft. We're really preparing for the Economic Summit, which will be in November. So, part of that process, this process, phase one, when it was launched in April through June of this year, over 40 members that, you know, kind of were formed as the executive team, they kind of stood up and said, you know, "How can we all roll up our sleeves to, you know, to kick off this work?" And then the broader community was invited to the table to add input. And at those meetings, we were able to orient over 200 members that were able to give insight and feedback on the best way to kind of drive this work. And then we're now in the current phase of gathering all of that data and feedback and have really aligned the possible initiatives that we, you know, the ones that was previously on the previous screen. And now we're writing the investment plan. So, coming up here in this next couple, in the next couple of weeks, we will continue to work with our residents to create these community-focused groups, and then we'll be able to unveil, unveil the investment plan again at the Economic Summit in November. And then the work doesn't stop there. So, we still want to ensure that our residents are engaged and that they too are a big part of the, you know, of the work that eventually will impact their lives. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alan Perot. I'm the board chair at the foundation, and you're three minutes from the end of this I just thought I'd give you the perspective of the board. This whole initiative, the DRIVE initiative, is the outcome of a board about just under three years ago, exploring the question, "What does it take to transform our community?" We were aware of 20 years of effort by a whole lot of people, government, nonprofit, business, and yet we're falling farther and farther behind on per capita income and in other indicators. And so, we said, "What do we have to do differently in the next 20 years to turn things around?" And we debated the issue at some length and came up with three broad conclusions, that we had to develop a plan that had broad community input and support, that the plan had to include a host of simultaneous efforts in many areas, and that each component of the plan had to meet the highest business standard, that is, that each effort had to be investment-worthy. We called it "The Billion Dollar Challenge." In those days, it's now become the DRIVE initiative because we thought, just flying off the seat of our pants, kind of, that that was the level of investment that it was going to take from the outside to have significant influence, impact on our many To attract that level of investment, we have to do just what any entrepreneur has to do in order to attract capital. We have to put together a comprehensive, compelling plan that demonstrates to potential investors that we're serious, that we're committed, that we're capable, that we're disciplined, and that we're investment-worthy. And investment-worthy simply means that the people in charge will deliver on their promises. It means that the investment will produce the predicted outcomes on time and on budget. And it means that the predicted outcomes provide a return on investment that is competitive with or superior to alternatives for that same capital. To assure that the DRIVE initiative meets the very demanding standard of investment-worthiness, we've hired the very best in the international consulting world, McKinsey and Brookings and the Urban Institute and others, to coach and lead and advocate for this process. And with their help and the amazing effort to, to date of hundreds of stakeholders, we believe that the DRIVE Community Investment Plan will attract the capital and expertise necessary to lead to economic mobility for all residents and just maybe produce a model for community transformation for others to copy. Our community hungers for leaders who believe we can do more. The DRIVE initiative is a do-more initiative. It's bold, it's comprehensive, but it's also carefully considered, and it seeks to produce a level of change this community has never seen before. Thank you for your attention.
We'll come back up here, and the first member with questions is Member Chavez.
Thank you, President Camperilio. Mayor, welcome back. Just a couple of questions on the initiative. I think, I think folks understand conceptually what this looks like. I'm trying to understand it from a, from a practical side. Is this initiative a compilation of projects and initiatives that are currently going on with, like, Fresno Unified, State Center, EDC? Or is this something that's framing a new initiative?
Right. Good question. So, it is both. We, we thought it would be really unwise if we're looking to get outcomes for our community to assume that there are no positive programs and initiatives underway that are delivering impact. The fact is, we can point to many things that are delivering impact. In almost every case, they are subscale, and they need financial investment to scale. And so, what we did in rapid fashion was we invited community participants, steering committee members, threw, opened the net, and said, "If you are working on anything related to this 10-year vision," which we had sourced through our executive committee and our steering committee, "if you're working on things that point to anything that look like improvements in this broad area, we want to know about it." So, went through just a community sourcing process, 109 initiatives were submitted. Many of them were things that are operating in isolation. So, we went through the process of connecting the dots. Did you know so-and-so is working over here? Can we put this together and look at bigger impact? Can you accommodate additional financial investment? What happens, et cetera, if we were to imagine that financial investment? So, that 109, those 109 initiatives were distilled down to, like, roughly 28 themes of work that connected to those three big buckets. Those 28 themes were then presented out to the steering committee with good input from our executive committee that's been volunteering a lot of time on this and further prioritized down. That's how we ultimately, and I should also mention, we also got input from our consulting team on some net new initiatives that actually didn't come from community sourcing, but that they've seen work in other communities and that, based on the data, seemed to be something that we should be focused on. So, I'd say it was roughly two-thirds existing, like, something's there, but it needs to be, we need to think about scale. We've got, and let me say it this way, we have great concepts and pilots. We don't do scale and impact in Fresno. So, roughly two-thirds existing stuff that we're trying to figure out how to scale and/or integrate with, with existing efforts. And then about a third of them are new items that came through this process.
Yeah. That actually helps. I mean, having served over at Fresno Unified too, I mean, you're right, everybody kind of works in silos and they're focused on their core mission, but that conversation usually doesn't happen, you know, or doesn't get facilitated. And then so, and I love that you have some folks here from the Brookings and McKinsey Group, I think everybody knows their, their reputation precedes them, and I love the data piece. So, what, what would you say would be the actionable piece to this? So, we find out, we know we have high unemployment, and I think it's something we all know, I think you would agree, you've been here long enough, but what's the actionable part afterwards? Is there, is there a commitment from the governor's office to fund some of these initiatives? And if so, how much money do you think that would?
Great, great question. We should just, we should just get to the chase, like, how much we've been asking for. And we need our partners, our elected officials, to help lead on that point. So, think of it this way. So, those 18 initiatives that are there, each one of them has anywhere from three to six component parts, all right? Each one of those component parts is an investable opportunity in and of itself. So, we're actually producing many business plans, M-A-N-Y, across these 18 initiatives. Once we get through this sprint, which is roughly the end of August, we'll have probably about 85% of the stuff put together. We'll take a step back and figure out, okay, what does this ultimate package really need to look like? We'll spend September refining that with the steering committee, the executive committee. I guarantee you, there are things that we are breaking in this fast-paced environment that we're working in. You know, we moved too fast, somebody got mad, they fell off, or we forgot to include this. There's all that sort of massaging that has to be done in September. There also needs to be clear identification of what, where should the state be investing? We can't obviously guarantee any particular dollar number, but what we can guarantee, I can, I think, speak confidently on behalf of the community foundation alone, and hoping that my colleagues or everybody working on this would agree, we can guarantee you that we will have clear, concrete asks and that we will be shouting at the top of our lungs with every expectation that the state will, in fact, be a lead investor. The reality is, however, that state government alone should not be the only investor in this market, right? There are going to be some things that we'll probably come back to you guys on and say, "Hey, we think this city ought to be a lead investor on fill-in-the-blank initiative." There will be clearly things that we'll be going to, national philanthropy, statewide philanthropy. We need you guys to be the seed capital in this larger, larger initiative to kick off potential additional investment. So, each one of these component parts, like, we have champions who are identified, it's going to ultimately be on them to help lead the course. We'll do our best to support the folks who are leading those initiatives. So, I would say we're about probably 45 to 60 days away from having a good look at what some of those investable opportunities are for the state. But we'll for sure get to that point, well, in time for the November summit.
And that's helpful. I mean, I think, you know, you and I have worked previously, where I'm naturally skeptical, but I, but I want to see the actionable part, like, great, like, I don't mind having a conversation, a long conversation about the issues and challenges, but what do we do to actually help? I think that's the part that, that I'm going to be interested in hearing.
And let me just say, that is the reason for the investment plan approach. This isn't a strategy document. It is informed clearly by sound reasoning, research, and strategy, but you cannot raise money if you don't have an investable plan. So, that's, that's a different twist for us locally.
And then I saw a couple of phrases in there, and I think it might have been related to the data, but how do you define an inclusive economy? We saw the discrepancy there of the different racial groups. Would this include a targeted hiring initiative, a targeted workforce development program? I'm trying to understand what that would look like.
Yep. We, so, first of all, we have to assess as a community, what is, what is the measurable change we want to see in those disparities over the next 10 years? We've called them out. We are now building initiatives that, that are on some range of the spectrum from sort of global economic forces down to neighborhood scale, building wealth in low-income communities and communities of color, like, there's, so there's kind of different altitude of these different initiatives. When we package them all up, we will have to have metrics that say, "If successfully executed, we believe we can deliver on the following changes to these data points that we're seeing." But it's going to be, think about this compilation of initiatives, like, no one thing is going to be able to move the needles the way we want. But we got to take a step back and look at what their cumulative impact would be if we're successful in implementing them. In the business plan template that we have provided to all the work groups, we've made sure that race and equity is at the center of it. We're asking work groups to really answer the question, "What are the, what are the populations that are impacted by the lack of investment? Who would be positively impacted and potentially negatively impacted if there's investment in this way?" So, we're doing our best to make sure that every step of the way, we're thinking through what, what is the impact, negative or positive, on the racial disparities we already experience? And then I think in the final analysis, it's like, okay, if we were to be successful in all this, is it really going to get us where we want to be? And if it doesn't, then we have to keep working on it. But obviously, it's iterative.
Okay. And then the last, last question I have, so what do you, what do you anticipate the city's part would be? Because, I mean, we have so many organizations that are part of that, and I think they're all doing their own work, but what do you anticipate the city's role would be in the, in the plan?
Yeah. So, the city, we're very grateful to have good participation from members of the city team here. So, HBS has been representing the mayor's office, and then we've had great staff input from Phil Sky on the civic infrastructure for low-opportunity neighborhoods. Dan Zach has been dragged into multiple work groups, and probably Lupe Perez has been an active participant on our executive committee and also on the second office economic development work group. So, I think the city needs to look at it both, two ways, both, what do we uncover in this process that helps unlock things you're already working on? Like, what is shovel, what is plug and play? Like, oh, my God, there you go, there's our five-year plan for XYZ. You all obviously will direct, along with the mayor, the staff, and how you want to carry that out. And then I think, I think there are likely going to be some things that we, as a community, have to talk about. Are these public funding priorities or not? And you all know all too well what that process looks like. So, we, we would ultimately, obviously, defer to the city to make those determinations.
Do you have some private sector folks on the committee?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And then last thing, is it possible I got a copy of that PowerPoint presentation?
You bet. We emailed it to the city, so it's here in the bowels.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Chavez. Next is Member Asparza.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Member Arias will be next.
I want to thank the committee, or the, these members of the committee who came out today. I think it was an excellent presentation and a very accurate characterization of Fresno's economy and our, our, our community here. I have been, you know, formerly introduced recently to some of the work groups. I'm now participating in three of them. I, it was like a kid in a candy store trying to choose which three to, to jump in on, but I narrowed it down. I saw there was quite a few that were very, very top-heavy with different folks, so I tried to insert myself in a few where I thought it could be helpful, and there weren't as many people. I would say you're definitely speaking my language in presenting these three different, three different concepts and three different approaches in terms of tackling our, our issues here in Fresno holistically. I, Councilmember Chavez asked quite a few of the questions that I had. I would just say that, don't be a stranger. You know, we're always happy to conduct a workshop on something so important that's happening in some ways external to City Hall, external to council, but also parallel. We're all moving in the same direction. I think we all want the same thing. So, I look forward to continue being involved and don't hesitate to let us know how we can be helpful.
Thank you, Member Asparza. And now we'll hear from Member Arias.
Mayor, just one question. What role do you see for the council in the immediate future? For me to be more explicit, what exactly do you need from us in the immediate future?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think you all probably know that we love to suck people into big things like this, and honestly, we'd follow your lead, Councilmember Arias, on, on what makes sense for you all, how you want to engage. But we are arms wide open, firmly believe that, you know, you got to follow your passions. And if this is something that's like, boy, I'm really motivated on this, I will dedicate time to be, whether it's a participant on the executive committee, I know, obviously, steering committee is doors wide open, and we've had a little bit adrift of people coming in and out. we've had a little bit adrift of people coming in and out, and we've got about 200 people in that big group, and it's a little fluid. Work groups, as Councilmember Asparza, so honestly, we'll follow your lead. You guys tell us how it's easy for you to be engaged and stay engaged.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Arias to serve on that.
I'll second that.
On all of the things. We need to know on all of the things.
This is what happens when you ask a lot of questions in the council and you drag the meeting out for some people. Yes, I would accept that. Thank you, councilmembers.
Great. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, the screen is clear, and as usual, you put together a great team, fantastic people, fantastic organizations. PowerPoint was very informative, and I don't think you could have any problems reaching each level of this process that you set in motion. You personally have been very good at it. You had a lot of training here, of course, and it continues. So it's such a great asset and benefit to our community, and I'm glad we're acknowledging these disparities and discrepancies and the fact that we need to openly work on those as a unit, as a group, as a city. And with your leadership and your team here, I think we're going to go a long way in a short period of time. So I can't thank you guys enough. I think that's it. The screen is clear, and again, apologize for our delay. We have to go back because we interrupted the time since they have to come and listen to this fantastic presentation. So please keep up the good work. Please keep us involved. We're here to serve you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.